How far out is that starting map? As the crow flies.
That's probably a year and nine miles. But it probably takes 25 minutes trying to get out there.
This meeting was already called but we're just between the executive session and getting started. We are in executive session to discuss some transactions of property. So we're going to go ahead and vote on that. And so Tyler, can you actually leave that out for the council members and they make it clear how they're voting?
Yes, I would, on behalf of Mayor Marion, be in the motion to award the 17.5, or a lease for the 17.5 acres on Highway 18B to Bryant Farms. And then the 10 acre, a lease for the 10 acres on Orchard Street, and the eight acres adjacent to the sewer lagoons to Leffen Farms. That's the official, thank you, Leffen Enterprises. And directing the city attorney to negotiate and finalize lease agreements for all three parcels.
Yes, Jim?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous with any abstaining. Okay. Good job, you guys.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yes, thank you, Tyler. Okay, now it is time for the public comment period. The public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. The public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city. The topic issued brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note, comments should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and/or city manager prior to directly addressing the council. So, I know for sure that Kay is here. So Kay, are you up?
There's someone.
Is Kay online?
She is, got her hand up in the air.
Okay. You've got the floor, Kay.
Okay. I am requesting an update on when the repainting or other solution like finds light to fix the safety issue for the crosswalk near the country bargain store. I have personally experienced being in the crosswalk in a motor vehicle. A driver did not see me and drove through the crosswalk. I have also been a driver and not seen the person in the crosswalk until I was almost through the crosswalk on Bridge Street. This is a safety issue for all citizens who are trying to cross Bridge Street from the country bargain side and even the IGA side. This issue has been brought up three or four times and we have not seen any status change. So please address this issue as upcoming events are occurring for the holidays and it is now darker. So our children and adults are at risk when they're crossing at that location. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. All right. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, I turned in the form.
Okay. I didn't get the bond.
Where is that? I'm so, oh, so sorry. In here with all the messy papers I have. I apologize.
So there's only one?
Yes, there's only one.
And none for more ones.
So Julia Leary, welcome.
Hi. Tonight I'm here to speak for the concerned citizens of Sheridan, present and not. In this town, majority have elected to all have you here to make decisions for the city for the better. Instead of being honest and transparent about various issues, the council and city representatives have decided to have meetings, participation and planning without clear communication to Sheridan residents. The fact citizens have been burdened with corrupt politics in a small town is devastating. This council, along with our mayor and city manager, have made the choice to keep the taxpayers in the dark regarding plans on homelessness. On top of that, we've had long-term members kicked off of our committees, amazing employees of our city fired, mismanagement of our tax dollars, and giving special treatment to your friends and individuals for your personal gain. Sheridan citizens will not stand for this behavior. Our questions will not stop. I'd like to ask the council, city manager, and the mayor, if you're not going to represent our city, please step down so we can do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Marion, we're allowed to ask questions if the person who's just up there? I'd like specifics rather than just raw charges. Please tell us more about how they've done things illegally.
Yeah, so I will ask and answer questions when you are more transparent and answer ours.
Councilor, about that.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Go. Joe Neely.
Hi, Joe Neely, resident for well over 25 years. I do agree about the crosswalk, how there's a lot of motors that are traveling through, barreling through, I would say. And I see kids getting off, going to school, and they're trying to go around a high SUV or big van and visibility's not there. It's not, nothing new. It's been a long, pretty year or two. I've been noticing it's been all photography. But I do think having like a flashing guard would be good for motors to get a heads up that there is a pedestrian in that crosswalk. And I think we had a little comment with the engineers that there might be a solution that I would like to hear them address. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Online or? Okay, now move on. We will now move on to the public hearing to amend the Sheridan Development Code, Section 16.235.2, I mean 020, Commercial Zone Case Number LA 2023-02. Okay, the purpose of this public hearing is to present information related to proposed amendments to Section 16.235.020 of the Sheridan Development Code, SDC, Commercial Zone Case Number LA 2023-02. Today is November 6th. It is 7:07 PM. And I'm opening the public hearing regarding the city of Sheridan, amending the Sheridan Development Code, Section 16.235.020, Commercial Zone Case Number LA 2023-02. Are there any members of the council who have a bias or conflict of interest? Is this what you do with? I would have to say that I have, I'm disclosed that I'm the, I'm not biased, but I'm, owner of the subject property. Oh, and I'm also related to the gentleman opening the business. Okay, so I guess that means that you will abstain, Mary? I don't have a problem with that, no. Okay. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction to hear this matter? Are there any objections to the notice that was sent out? Notice was in the news register and posted on the city's website. And now Tyler will.
Oh, we actually have Laura on.
Oh, is Laura here?
Yeah.
Okay, so Laura, let the city planner read the required reading and the city planner report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry that I had able to join you in person, but hello from Cleveland, Ohio. This matter came before the Planning Commission in August when a citizen of the community during a helpful comment mentions that the current development code does not permit permitted beverage production in the commercial zone. Pursuant to its authority under 16.235.040, the Planning Commission instructed staff to prepare a legislative amendment for its consideration. Staff prepared that report and presented it to, and the proposed amendment at the October 9th Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a hearing and moved to bring this to city council, which is the number before you today. As the mayor has referenced, all proper notices have occurred with the paper, with the website and with the requisite 35 dating of this to DLCD. Now to the substance of hand. The current development code does not allow permitted beverage manufacturing in the commercial zone. However, other similar uses are permitted in the commercial zone. These permitted uses, you can see from Exhibit A, would include bodily, handicapped, and similar manufacturing. The proposed amendment would expand the list of permitted uses under 16.235.020F by adding part five, permitted beverage production. There are some specifics to the language that has been offered by staff. First of all, in order to be permitted, the primary use on the property must be a retail or wholesale use. And the area involved in the manufacturing of the permitted beverage production cannot involve more than 50% of the gross floor area of the primary use or 2,000 square feet of gross floor area, whichever is smaller. Moreover, that all processing and storage materials for the manufacturing is fully within the enclosed building and that the building and layout of the manufacturing can use on the site are compatible with the character of the commercial area. Finally, that there shall be a side yard at least 20 feet adjacent to a residential zone and 20 feet for the rear yard. And there are, as this council may be aware, in order to do legislative amendments, staff must also walk through the statewide planning polls, which has been done in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions specific to those findings and any other questions that the city council may have at this time.
Okay. Let's put that before. At this time, if there are any members of the public here to speak in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions for the staff at this time regarding this matter? Anybody have any questions? Okay. Okay, at this time, if there are any members of the public here to speak in favor, please state your name, city of residence, and your statement. You'll have up to five minutes to speak, but please be brief and to the point. If you want to reiterate what someone has already said, it is perfectly fine to simply state that you agree with a certain speaker's statement. Would anyone wish to speak?
Do we have any cards?
In favor?
Do you have any cards for public hearing cards?
Not public hearing cards, just public comment. Okay, if there are any people who wish to speak in opposition, now is the time. Please state your names, city of residence, and statement. People have up to five minutes to speak, but please be brief and to the point. And if you want to reiterate what someone else has already said, it's fine to say you agree with that speaker. Would anyone wish to speak in opposition? No? Okay. If you wish to speak and are neither in support nor opposition, but wish to speak regarding the city of Sheridan, amending the Sheridan Development Code, Section 16.235.020, Commercial Zone Case Number LA 2023-02. Does anyone wish to speak? No? With no further comments, the public hearing of the matter of the city of Sheridan, amending the Sheridan Development Code, Section 16.235.020, Commercial Zone Case Number LA 2023-02, is now closed. It is 7:14 PM. Councilors, this is the time for deliberation on the report and comments set forth in this hearing. Okay. So, we can vote.
Can I have a question?
Yes. Do you have a question, Roxy?
Yes.
Okay.
In earlier discussions, we talked about the need for testing for anything that might get put down, sewers or drainage. And I was wondering, at what point in the process does that happen? Is it part of the Planning Commission, I mean changes here? Or is that part of the jurisdiction for the licensing? Or if not, where?
Heidi? Two things about that. One, it usually happens. Oh, I'm sorry about that. It usually happens at the time when somebody submits an application to do anything. But number two, we have our engineers here tonight. They can absolutely speak about that if you'd like to know more about that. Tim, I imagine would like to fill that. Why not make them work for him?
Hi, my name is Tim Gross. I'm an engineer with Southwest Engineering located in Newport, Oregon, which also has to see the location of Rogue Brewing. And Rogue Brewing has gone through owner's testing for their wastewater effluent associated with their brewery. And typically, the process by which you would identify when to do the testing and what testing is necessary is when they do an application for construction of a facility and they do an estimate of what sort of wastewater that can be generated and estimate of what sort of strength they're going to be having. So now you have a brewery. And down the road, they decide to do expansion within their walls. That doesn't require a permit. And all of a sudden, they're sending a lot more wastewater effluent to you. Within your wastewater code, you also have the ability, as an industrial user, to put them under a special permit so that you can capture that waste and have them either do pretreatment or pay extra strength charges associated with the waste that they're sending you. You have to be really particularly careful with brewery waste because it has a lot of biological oxygen in it and it's not the same as like you get from the rest of the types of waste that you get in your city. It has a lot of sugars in it and so it changes sort of how the wastewater process works. And so a lot of communities that have had microbreweries or other things start popping up and then have had wastewater issues if they're not careful about how their clothes dress it. And so, you know, as a recommendation for an engineer, make sure your code addresses it, that you have the wherewithal to be able to get them to do testing or permitting as necessary as they continue to grow their facility. Any questions?
That is a great explanation. Thank you.
And we did that.
We're in the process of doing this. We will have the final reading of that ordinance updating our pretreatment code at our next.
Thank you.
Okay, so ordinance 2023-06 and ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 and the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone. This ordinance would amend the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 and the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone. Tonight, the council may introduce ordinance 2023-06 with two readings.
I would introduce ordinance 2023-06, an ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 and the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone to be read by title only, first reading by title only.
Any discussion? Okay. Vote by show of hands?
I need a second, first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm second.
Second, okay. All right. Any discussion? No? Okay. Vote via show of hands. Those in favor?
The city is abstaining.
Five in favor and the city is abstaining.
Ordinance 2023-06 and ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone.
Make a motion to accept the first reading?
Second.
Discussion? You want a roll call, please?
A. Cut. Yes? Buckles?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Hebert?
Abstain.
George?
Aye.
Hodgins?
Aye.
I'd make a motion to introduce ordinance 2023. An ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 and the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone. Second reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion? A vote show of hands? By the favor of the city's team?
Ordinance 2023-06 and ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to allowed uses in the commercial zone.
Make a motion to accept the second reading?
My second.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call vote, please?
A. Cut.
Yes?
Buckles?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Hodgins?
Aye.
Hebert?
The final reading will take place on November 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Laura.
Yes, thanks.
Thank Laura for attending.
That's three hours later there.
Okay, so we are going to, first of all, Councilor Roxy is going to offer a special presentation tonight. And whenever you're ready, Roxy.
I'm going to read this tonight because sometimes I tend to forget things. We have all witnessed what, we have all witnessed and have been on our own option about homelessness. Most of us are tired of the garbage, the filth, the crime, and just the mere appearance of homelessness people. And I would venture to guess that we would all want it to go away. Maybe someday it will, but not without the cooperation of those willing to make a difference and are inclined to do something about it. Will it ever happen? We have citizens come forward to voice their opinions on what the city council should do. Some of their opinions are of value and consideration. To the city, thank you for sharing and helping us see what you want to happen. But most are telling us what they do not want and what we should not do. City council meeting interactions, emails, social media concerns are predominantly negative, prejudiced, and do not help address the issue. Doing nothing will not make it go away. The city is committed to providing some benefits to the homeless in Sheridan. And to those of you who are opposed, shame on you.
Roxy, it's so real. We just had a shooting.
In our search for a solution.
No, Marion, we just had a shooting.
No.
Okay, we're not going to address it though.
I mean it.
In our search for a solution, we're working for a common goal. We should focus on what we can do to make this a better place for all of us. Sheridan is a small town. The population on record includes the prison population. We do not have the sheer numbers of homelessness that larger cities must deal with. Our homeless will estimate there are less than 30 living on the streets and in open places in Sheridan. But these do not include those that come and go or those that are couch surfing or living with friends and family. If we start in a small way, we can get a better handle on what our homeless need, what they want, and what they will take advantage of instead of creating services that are not necessarily used just because someone else says that they will be. I would like the council to consider three items. One would be a soup kitchen at the DFW Hall that would provide warm meals and a place to eat them. A meal once a day for perhaps four or five days a week and/or a sack lunch to take. Food is a priority and we can provide food with the help of other organizations' assistance. The food kitchen is a wonderful source for those that have a kitchen, a microwave and a refrigerator to prepare and eat their few meals. However, homeless people cannot store, make, and serve meals. They eat what they can carry and they have no use for items that need storage, refrigeration, and heating to eat. Many face the possibility of items, including food, being stolen by those without food. Two, we can create a place to shower, use a toilet, use a sink, wash up, provide basic needs for our homeless. This space could also include clothing, personal hygiene items, snacks, and encouragement. We have the funds to equip and supply a structure for the homeless to use in a supervised and safe environment. Whether it be portable or stationary, it would serve a huge need. This does not need to be open 24/7. This would be supervised on a schedule with rules to be observed and enforced. The house and the lot, vacant lot on Mill Street could accommodate this project with some additions and remodeling. Number three, a resource area. The scheduled personnel once a week at first. After it's been consistently and independently open, we can see what services are needed and requested and not allocate time and manpower to a cause that might not be utilized or may need to be changed. A place for Department of Health Services, YCAP, to set up a table on a regular basis. One day a week could help start the schedule and acceptance from the homeless knowing that someone would be there for them. This could be incorporated in city hall or house on Mill Street or somewhere else at a location that we can decide on later. I personally have between five and 10 homeless people that rent storage units from me. I talk to them about their needs and their problems. I have seven surveys returned to me, all from homeless people. None of them want to be homeless. All of them have different reasons for their current situation. They agree that these three projects would be needed and would be used. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to inform the citizens of Sheridan and remind the council that we have talked and talked and talked and talked about the situation. We've asked for more information. We've had a town hall meeting. We have invited organizations to our meetings. We've had multiple conversations on this issue. And we have put out surveys. So far, the only thing that we have agreed upon is that it's a tough decision and we don't have the answer. It's time to proceed. We cannot expect the city manager to make this decision for us and it's not our job to do so. We need to give her directions on what we want to have her accomplish without micromanaging every step. Heidi has the tools to make these projects happen. Many of the pieces are already in place. We can ask the task force to work on the next step of this process, but we need to get started on these basic needs now. This is our decision and we need to come to an agreement on something that will make a difference. Starting small cannot be wrong. Hopefully, it will show that we are not only empathetic towards those that are homeless but are also willing to do something about it. So to recap, three items. I'd like to see, to facilitate a soup kitchen at the DFW Hall, create a place to shower, wash, and have other basic needs with a trailer and a house renovation for Mill Street, and to provide a resource area. Please join me as council members in a consensus to direct our city manager to proceed with these three projects immediately.
Now is not the time for public comment. So if you can't, if you can't not talk, you will be asked to leave.
Who are you to address any of us? You are not an elected person. No. You are a city-caged person. You are nobody to talk to us. Nobody. Never told us to get out. Never. Why is it time for me to leave?
We have an option.
You have like 20 minutes to talk. How many say something?
You got it.
I'll wait.
Mary, can we consider taking a recess until the police get here?
Ridiculous. How many homeless people are we talking about? Roxy, you said you surveyed. Who did you survey?
We're not taking any comments from you.
Who was surveying?
Quit talking.
Quit talking. I wonder why your questions weren't answered.
Wonder what the-
Oh, shut up.
All right.
This recess until this matter is-
You and Tyler are paid by the city. You are not elected to do shit. No, we have to wait now, because I have to leave.
That was our last thing, so they did. And your rates just got increased, so, you know. Oh, your water just spilled, and it's dripping all over the floor.
And you know how to deal with breweries.
No, I had it before the fire. Yeah, I went through the-
See, you ever seen those things where they make people sit on the side table for somebody to hang their fur sign like that? She totally threw that like a cup holder for your coffee cup.
I couldn't live or even there while they did the investigation.
Tell me, you're a millionaire.
It's a pretty small town, yeah.
Just make sure you're patenting it. Totally sure.
Really? Oh, your little friend came to help you, looked so kind. Let's go, sir.
Bro, tough guy. Wow, impressed.
It is neat.
Grow beard.
We're not staying for this. We'll see him outside, see him out next week protesting. Oh, are you flapping?
Yeah, goodbye.
Yeah, you should grow up and get this thing scored away.
That's what we're trying to do.
You should see how it ruined words. This ain't it. Okay. Before we get started, I would like to say something. I will not allow my council to be disrespected by people who cannot follow the rules. I am sorry that we just had to wait seven minutes for the police to get here to ask where those people are, but I will not allow that in our meetings.
I would appreciate you, or thank you. Okay, so, and Roxy, I want to thank you because, uh, you know, I know you put a lot of heart, soul, and thought into that presentation. I know that didn't happen in five minutes, I know you've been thinking about it for like a year, and so, uh, just thank you, okay? Do a good job. All right, so the next, uh, item that we're gonna cover, and we're going to, uh, appoint people to our local housing task force. And first of all, I want to thank everyone who threw their name in the hat to help with this effort, and several, uh, nonprofits and service organizations, uh, you know, uh, they are going to help, and then several individual community members are willing to help. And that says a lot for Sheridan, uh, that people are willing to roll up their sleeves and help with this situation. So I would like to acknowledge, um, those who will be appointed to this task force. We have Amanda White Mark, American Legion Post seventy-five, Amy Stuck, Deputy Brady Walters, Churches United of West Valley, who will be represented by Julia Schuman and Nick, and I, I've known Nick for a long time, and I can't pronounce his last name, Janetti or something like that. Uh, Encourage Yanhill Valley, Jessica Helms, Margaret Bucknell, Sheridan Revitalization, Stacy Coker, Yanhill County Health and Human Services, YCAP, and Provoking Hope. So many thanks to all of you. Yeah. So, uh, I too have something that I, uh, I'm just gonna leave my first part also, but what we're aiming at here is to make some decisions tonight regarding how the council will choose to move forwards. So we've been talking about homelessness issues for more than a year. Several citizens have come forward to express their views and opinions at council meetings. Other citizens have taken the time to email their concerns to us. It's you. Okay. We've held town halls, attended League of Oregon City Workshops, and many, many meetings. On October twentieth, I emailed all of the, uh, council members a questionnaire to help them, you know, reach out and communicate with a broader range of people in Sheridan and get their opinions on this subject. As counselors, uh, you know that one of your most essential responsibilities is to represent the citizens of Sheridan. So I would like to make some decisions tonight regarding what the council will and will not approve. Without this information, Sheridan's new task force will not know which projects the council wishes to pursue and which the council will not allow. I'm sure they would rather not waste their time on projects that will not be supported. Again, your decisions will also benefit our city manager and staff by not wasting their time on projects with no council support. If you cannot make a yes or no decision based on the tremendous amount of information you've reviewed over the past year and a half, and you could not find a majority opinion from your constituents, we will move that item to the next meeting for further discussion. Also, if you do not want to take ad action on a specific issue or project right now, please vote no. Just so you know, the council is always welcome to address that item in the future. Again, we need to know what to move forward with right now and what is off the table. Here's a review of what's already being offered or is in the works. Churches United, weekly food distribution through the grade school and high school for students and families over their three-day weekends. So Churches United is taking this on. What it is, is the school district has four-day weekend. Sometimes, uh, kids go home without a lot to eat over a three-day weekend. They will provide not only for the student, but for, they'll find out how many are in their family and make sure they have something to eat. The, they're working with Grand Sheremine and Food Bank to provide that food, plus I think there's six churches involved in Churches United. So there's the volunteers, and they will take this thing and handle it, uh, on, they're very good, so we're grateful for that. And there's, um, one that's possible, is possible clothing distribution under consideration by the Sheridan Church with the Nazarene. Pastor Rachel is looking at that. They haven't, uh, they have some things to nail down before they can say for sure they can move forward on that. And then, of course, we do have the Grand Sheremine and Food Bank, serving like a hundred and forty, uh, families per week. Uh, Calvary Chapel West Valley, uh, they also do, uh, weekly food distribution here in Sheridan. And we offer free bus transit transportation, uh, via, um, Yanhill County Transit, um, uh, so people can access county services in McMinnville. Also, blankets and snacks are delivered to houseless people by our deputies when they're out on patrol. Some good citizens, uh, such as Penny's son there, have bought Minn blankets and, and things like that for the deputies to give the folks on, on cold nights. And then the city of Sheridan is right now sponsoring a sock and blanket drive, and they do kind of a friendly, fun competition between Public Works, City Hall, and the library, and, uh, all of those items are just distributed out to the community who need them. Okay, so I just want to tell you what we've got in the works. Now, um, what I'd like to do first, and then we're just gonna, we're gonna just reach a consensus on some of these things, but I would like, I could go around the table, and those of you who did take those surveys and you went out and talked to your neighbors and people at work and trying to reach out to a wider range of people who live in the community, people we may not always hear from. So I've asked the council to bring their survey forms with them tonight and then have them tallied so that they can kind of give us a quick tally, uh, on their results. Could we start with you, Jim?
Sure. I managed to get, uh, fourteen surveys back. I've had some more out there that did not come back. They were, they were promised to come back, but they didn't make it. But, uh, the bottom line is, uh, resoundingly negative responses to this survey. I'll just go first, because there's some people that may not be aware of the survey. Number one, would you support the city of Sheridan using two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in budgeted funds to build a multi-home, multi-unit homeless shelter in the city, on city of Sheridan property? The fourteen surveys, they were all no.
Okay, so zero and fourteen, no, thank you.
Would you support the establishment of homeless campsites in Sheridan? Fourteen no's, but one of those was maybe. I don't know what that means. I did not ask anybody to explain these. I just gave them the survey and said, please give it back. Would you support four or five small individual pods or cabins for housing homeless people on city property? Two people said yes, twelve people said no. Do you favor the city of Sheridan providing a combination shower, laundry, restroom, mobile trailer on city property? Two people said yes, twelve people said no. Again, that, I think it was probably the same person said maybe. And then, if you do favor the nonprofit, nonprofit, Encourage Yanhill Valley operating, let me try that again. If so, do you favor the nonprofit, nonprofit, Encourage Yanhill Valley operating a facility using Measure One Ten funds? One yes, eleven no. Two abstain, obviously, because they had already answered that in question number four. The question that came up with this one, written on the form, said, "What happens when Measure One Ten is repealed?" I have no answer to that. Question five, would you support a resource center offering information about our established county services? Six people said yes, eight people said no, and again, maybe. Yanhill County Transit Bus is currently free to ride, but Yanhill County Transit has suspended its service. All Yanhill County Transit buses are accessible and equipped with wheelchairs and lifts or ramps. Bicycles are allowed. Do you think additional help is needed to access the county resources in McMinnville? One person said yes, thirteen said no. Would you support offering county services and resources locally through a resource center in Sheridan? Three people yes, ten people no, one person did not respond. And then, if yes, would you support renovating a house across the street from City of Fall behind First Federal for this use? Two people said yes, ten people said no, and the question was, where would these funds come from? Question eight, should car camping be allowed within the city of Sheridan for those facing domestic silence, domestic violence, excuse me? Two people said yes, twelve people said no, and this one surprised me a little bit. I don't know if they read the entire question, but they came through with a hell no. Seems a little strong when you're facing domestic violence, but that's the same point. And finally, if yes, should there be specific locations for car camping, such as designated parking lots? One yes, twelve no. That's what I got.
Okay. Um, you're, and maybe it would go faster if I read the question and then you guys just give me your results, like, okay.
I have a suggestion. Is it possible to put the survey up somewhere so the public can see it, and then we can just say, number one, how many yeses and no's? Number two, would it be?
Yeah, so, I'm just gonna read it and then you guys give me your answers. So, thank you, Jim, but I can see where, okay, so, question one, should the city of Sheridan construct a multi-unit houseless shelter in Sheridan? Let's start with Liz.
I surveyed five people and five no's.
Are you, are you asking for the survey results or for what the counselors gave survey?
No, the survey results.
I just, I was trying to hopefully just get-
We could just maybe compile it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
I have a problem because sometimes some of our decisions might not be based on what our server results are for a different reason.
Okay, all right, so let's just go ahead then, and let's just try to reach a consensus of the council. So, uh, you guys know what your results are, and so now you're not, we'll turn all our surveys in, we'll compile those results, and we will get those results back to you. But so now, what we're trying to do is, uh, prepare for our, uh, new task force, and we're trying to give them an idea of what they, okay. So, number one, should the city of Sheridan construct a multi-unit houseless shelter in Sheridan? All in favor? Okay, opposed?
I think people, Mary, I'm sorry, I think that there's some, yeah, confusion about what you're trying to cover.
Okay, so just from, uh, your results and representing the people of Sheridan, and based on a year and a half of talking about it, we're trying to reach a consensus so that we can move forward. So when I ask these questions, I want you to just answer yes or no. All are, all in favor, all opposed, and if you need to discuss it, we will move it to the next agenda. Yes, Jim?
One thing you left out when you're reading that, question number one, is using the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in legislative funds to build a multiple-unit homeless shelter.
Okay.
And, um, if I may, uh, one of the survey respondents, we had a good talk about this, and that respondent told me, and I, unfortunately, I wholeheartedly concur with that person, that with two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, you can do damn little to get to accomplish a task.
Okay, well, mine, mine doesn't have that part on there, and so, I, I understand what you're saying because you're talking about ongoing-
Yeah, there's, you know, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, if you're going to build something, that might not even be enough to build something.
Right.
And then if you want to continue on, most of the responses I got is, where's the money coming from?
Okay, so what I'm gonna try to do is just get yes or no, and if we need to discuss it, we'll move it to the next meeting. Do you have, okay?
I need some clarification. Are we going to give our response based on what our constituents said, or based on what we think?
Yes, you're gonna try to represent people in Sheridan. So whatever they tell you, or, you know, you, you're gonna vote the way they, as a counselor you would, which would be to represent what people told you, and what you've learned from these meetings, and everything that's happened over the last year and a half. So, should the Sheridan City Council support a homeless campsite in Sheridan? All in favor?
I have seven votes.
Okay, so you, you're not in favor. Okay, so, so-
I have seven votes for yes.
But is that what you want, Ross? You have what Mary Ann-
Yeah, this is my survey results.
But that's not what Mary Ann is asking for, yeah.
I, that's what I was gonna say, I think that there is a general confusion.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna say. I think that there is a general confusion about how you want people to vote.
Let me try again. Hang on to your surveys and pass them all around to where we collect them. We'll collect them, and we do want that information, but that's not what I'm asking you right now.
So what are you asking us?
Just passing your surveys, so we take that out of the equation.
May I? If I understand correctly, what the mayor is requesting from us, we've done our survey work, we've talked to constituents. Now, what do we think about these same questions that our constituents have responded to? Now, if you want to base your answer entirely on your surveys, that's fine. That's what you think we should do. On the other hand, if you want to answer the question based on whatever you think, whether you want to use your surveys or not, this is now the time to express your opinion. Am I right, Marianne?
Yes.
Okay, I'm having a real hard time with this because we are representing our constituents. And I just handed mine in, and my representation just went in that direction. So I want to base my answers on what the constituents said to me. It may only be five, but I don't think that this should be my opinion. And I'm getting two answers from you. One is based on the surveys, and one is your opinion.
I thought it was being confusing because I thought some of you were thinking that I want to do the tally up and give your answers, but I could see that was gonna take all night. So I said, instead of that, you know, that's why I was just trying to say, take those away. So when you cast, when you vote in favor or opposed, you're just representing, you're representing the people that you've spoken to and the people, the meetings you've been to, and like Jim said, just... So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to figure out what does the Sheridan City Council want to do about these topics? So just one vote per counselor, and if there is need for more discussion, we will do that at the next meeting.
So a culmination of all of it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just like any other council vote, just vote the best you can to represent the people that you represent. Okay, so should the Sheridan City Council support a homeless campsite in Sheridan? All in favor. One. Opposed?
Maybe at a later time is my answer.
Okay, so Liz, so the instructions for that is if you want to bring it up again later, we can...
Want me to abstain?
No, I just want, you know, if you're not comfortable voting, that's fine. But just because you don't want to do it right now, if you don't want to do it right now, vote no, because then it could be brought up again later when we're ready for it. Okay, so, okay. Should the city of Sheridan build individual cabins or pods for houseless people on city property? That would be like the little cabins or pods that we've talked about. All in favor.
You missed two. You missed number two. Would you establish the...
We did, okay.
Would you support the establishment of a homeless camp...
Yeah, I must have a different... That must be what my problem is. Okay.
Here, read this one. This one, that's a girl I'll bring up.
Oh, okay, yeah. This is, this is a survey. Okay, so if you would just vote, okay? I didn't mean for this to get so convoluted, but just vote the way you wish to represent the people who have given you information. So the first one was, should the city of Sheridan construct a multi-unit shelter in Sheridan? And the consensus was no. Should the Sheridan City Council support a homeless campsite in Sheridan? One in favor, four opposed. Should the city of Sheridan build individual cabins or pods for houseless people on city property? All in favor? One? All opposed? One, two, three, four.
She's not going off the survey. She has separate questions that she is asking.
Yes.
That she is trying to get consensus on. So looking at the survey, it will be confusing because they're not the questions that she's asking right now.
Okay. Should the Sheridan City Council provide an easily moved mobile unit containing showers, laundry, and restrooms on city property? All in favor? One? All opposed? One, two, three, four.
She's not going off the survey. She has separate questions that she is asking.
Yes.
That she is trying to get consensus on. So looking at the survey, it will be confusing because they're not the questions that she's asking right now.
Okay. Should the Sheridan City Council provide an easily moved mobile unit containing showers, laundry, and restrooms on city property? All in favor? One, two, three. Okay, all opposed? One, two. Okay. Does the Sheridan City Council favor a permanent unit containing showers, laundry, and restrooms on city property? So in other words, the first one would be a mobile unit. Are you also in favor of a more permanent unit containing showers, laundry, and restrooms? All in favor? None? Opposed? One, two, three, four. So the follow-up is, if the council does favor that, are they in favor of using Measure 110 funds to pay for it in Manhattan? But if that does not pass, so... Should the city of Sheridan provide additional transportation for residents seeking county services in McMinnville? We currently offer free bus service on weekdays via Yanhill County Transit. So the question is, should we provide other types of transportation? All in favor? One, two. Two in favor, those opposed? One, two, three, four. Should a council approve long-term RV camping within Sheridan city limits? So this would be like parking in people's yards and whatnot. So all in favor? One? Those opposed? Should the city of Sheridan offer a resource center at either the food bank or on city property? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Regarding the city-owned house across the street at 127 Mill Street, the city of Sheridan received a $39,700 bid from Bigelow Construction to renovate the downstairs-only of this two-story house as a resource center. Another possibility is to work with Judy Adams to develop a resource center at Grand Sherminah Food Bank. So here's the question. Is the council in favor of renovating the city-owned house as a resource center? Those in favor? One, two, three, four. Those opposed? Two. Is the council in favor of working with Grand Sherminah to develop a resource center? Those in favor? One, two, three, four. And those opposed? Okay, that's it. So the results indicate that the Sheridan City Council does not wish to pursue a multi-unit houseless shelter in Sheridan. Does not wish to pursue a city council... The city council does not wish to pursue a homeless campsite in Sheridan. Five out of six do not want to build individual cabins or pods for houseless people on city property. Three are in favor, two are not, in placing an easily movable mobile unit containing showers, laundry, and restrooms. So that one passes. Does the city council favor a permanent unit? It was zero to four with, I think, just abstain. Six is, should the city provide additional transportation? Two are in favor, four are opposed. Should the council approve long-term RV camping? One in favor, five opposed. And should the city offer a resource center? That unanimously is approved, so that's great. Okay, so, and then it looks like, is the council in favor of renovating the city-owned house as a resource center? Four said yes, two said no. And is the council in favor of working with Grand Sherminah to develop a resource at Grand Sherminah? The same results. Four said yes, two said no. Okay, that's really all we needed to know for tonight. Okay. Yes, please.
I have a question.
Okay.
Presentation I made earlier, I asked for consensus. Does that mean we are not consenting, or do we have a consensus, and could we have a discussion?
I'll open the discussion. I feel like some of the people that I gave the survey to were in this room tonight. So I feel they didn't feel heard after that you read your piece. I think, I mean, it's hindsight now, but I think we need to pay more attention to our constituents and what their needs are. And I think if we survey them, they want to hear the results of that or some feedback from that. And what you've read was the first I'd heard of it even, and I didn't... Some of what was said, I don't feel like we've come to consensus as a council about. We've talked about a lot of things, but I don't feel like we've come to consensus on some of that. So I guess I'm saying two different things there, but what I'm trying to say is, I'm really upset about what happened in this meeting tonight. And I think that we upset some of our, some of the people that attended because they didn't feel heard. And one of the reasons they didn't feel heard is because we should have started with the surveys and let them know we listened to what they said and given them that feedback. Some of what you read was almost punitive toward what you've heard in the public. And I don't think that we're here to punish the public. I think that we're here to represent them.
Except Liz, no matter what, they... They need to act respectful in a public meeting.
I agree.
No matter what.
And a lot of what I said, we've talked about, and we've heard the negative, most, all of my surveys were from the homeless. So you have to consider that, where your resources are coming from or your answers. And like I said, we're here to make this a better place for all of us, not picking and choosing who's got the loudest voice, got the most money, or the least money. It should be for all of us.
Jim?
You had three points, is that correct? Would you please go through those again, just the final point?
The first was establishing a soup kitchen, so that maybe open one or five days a week for one warm meal to eat, have a place to eat it, and perhaps a sack lunch to take. That we can, we can do. We already know we can do that. Number two was establishing a place for showers, people that clean water, can use a bathroom, can use some of the basic needs that would be supervised and enforced. Number three, a resource area. It's not that I'm picking or choosing where, but we need these people to be able to come somewhere and know that there's someone there that can help them, not just wander around. Do I go to food bank, or do I go to City Hall, or where do I go? If we have a place for them, and we have a place to meet, we have a specific schedule, I believe they will come, and we can help them.
Jim?
I'm not opposed to any of that. The question always comes down to money. Now, I thought that the American Legion was already doing at least one meal a day going out, so we've... That's already been started.
Right, and I don't believe there will be, I can talk with Heidi specifically, but I don't believe there would be a lot of funds from the city coming from there.
No, I'm not even talking about, you know, where they're coming from, it's just, you know, funds. We need to... Bottom line to me, though, this is a stupid reference because we're talking about human beings here. To go back to the chicken mess. I didn't want chickens here, but it was pretty obvious. Good people did. It's not my job to stop what the people want, so I said yes. Now, I'm not against any of these things, and I think they're relatively simple and should not be a problem. But I think here's the time where the task force needs to come through and say, hey, we've got all these people here. Put it together. Now, I counted, we got 13 representatives on this task force. Between 13 of them, some of those people have resources that we can readily use, and that can be handled very quickly. And I think your suggestion is great. However, if we get absolutely no support from the community, I think what you said, shame on them, is true. But we were elected to represent them.
And to add to that, the fact that we've been talking about this for so long, that is the reason for just vote yes or no, because we've talked it over and talked it over and talked it over, and now it's time for some action, especially now that we're gonna start this new task force, and we need to know what they should work on. It sounds like they should work on a resource center, they should maybe possibly work on the shower, bathroom, laundry facilities, those types of things. And absolutely don't even worry about building any structures, you know? It's kind of, this is what the council has said, the majority of the councilors have said they want. And I think a lot of what Roxy has talked about could easily work into this. And yes, at the Legion, the food bank now, you know, they can work with our food bank, which, to provide some food for them. I know their kitchen has been remodeled, and they're good to serve their regular breakfast like they used to. And so it shouldn't be difficult to make that one, I mean, everything takes some work, but that one shouldn't be too tough. So, Heidi?
I just want to reiterate the point for the public, that no decisions have been made tonight. I know this gets really confusing for people, but no decisions have been made tonight. This is just some general direction for the task force to consider. The mission statement of the task force, the task force will seek to better understand the scope and causes of homelessness in Sheridan. The task force will focus on the systems in place to address homelessness and will consider a range of concerns and potential solutions. The task force will identify and recommend actions to address these issues that will come back to the city council for decisions. So we need to be really clear to the public, because I, we've had several people come forward and say, I don't think that people realize that there's no decision made. So there is no decision made this evening, okay?
I know, there's all kinds of rumors that we're building a shelter and stuff like that.
I know, but that's what I'm trying to say. There is no decision made tonight. There is no shelters being made or anything. We have instead given tonight the task force some direction and some ideas about some research that you have done.
And so, then people need to know, the Sheridan City Council, they are our policymakers, and Heidi and her crew are policy implementers. So they need to know what this council, and they've been waiting to find out. And like I said, it's not fair to Heidi to guess what it is the council wants. We need to tell her. So go ahead, Jim.
Well, since we all know Sheridan isn't a huge city, but we still have a problem with information getting out, and then the rumors would start. And it seems as though lately more people like to leave the rumors than they would the actual facts, ignoring that we've never made a single decision on what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. Of course, quite frankly, I said almost two years ago, I haven't got a clue how we're gonna do it. I'm hoping to get some information on that. So I'm counting on this task force to come through with some answers that we can use. I agree with you, Roxy, that these things need to be done, these people. We're talking about people, okay? We're talking about human beings. Therefore, we just can't say, they're all druggies and criminals, and we don't want them here anymore. That's not true. Roxy's got the crew. She's talked to them, and she knows they're not all druggies and criminals. They need and deserve some help. How we accomplish that is what we're needing to find out, and I'm counting on this task force to do it. I don't know. I honestly do not know how to do it. And still, work with all of you and the rest of the citizens of Sheridan to fix this problem. It's not gonna go away. If we just say, we're not gonna do anything, you think we're gonna have any less homeless people? No, they're still gonna be here, and if they're stealing cans off your front porch or stealing your property, they're still gonna be here. So we need to help who we can and work from there, but that's what the task force should do, and I hope they will.
And we have been fortunate to have a lot of really great people sign up to help with this task force. Several nonprofits and people who specialize in this type of thing, and so I am looking forward to hearing what they have to say.
I am very much counting on that, because I still don't have a clue how to accomplish these things.
Thank you, and Andy?
So this is, as Roxy brought it a long time ago, let's just start off little here, start off small. So let's just do a few things and see how it goes, and then we can come back and discuss adding more things and adding more things as things work, or changing things that don't work. But this is a start. Just start in baby steps. Let's, just get out of the box, and let's go a little ways, so that's...
Well, the main thing that I thought we needed to do was make some decisions. We've been talking it over for so long, we need to make decisions so that we can get some direction and start getting things accomplished, so... Okay, yes.
And the decision that was made is that we establish the task... And the decision that was made is that we establish the task force, and now we're giving them some instruction. I just wanna reiterate that we haven't made any, right?
There's been no vote, there's been no vote.
Tell us a vote, there's a lot.
Okay. We made, we made a decision to get a task force. Spread that around, and you know who those people are, you can get their telephone numbers. But I think, I think in the baby, I think in the baby steps is what's important, and when the resource center comes in and they start doing a poll on the people that come in and the people they can help. And the task force finds out, let's say they get the lunches going and they find out how that works. So that's settled over here, then we can take on this subject matter over here. But we have to, we know what that is, and we haven't gotten this settled yet. It's like trying to read chapter thirteen when you're on chapter one. You just have to go through it and read each chapter as it has to offer you, and then build on it, instead of jumping around all over the place.
Okay, so I think, uh, we can now move on to the city engineer presentations. Thank you.
Cooperation and understanding.
I feel like there should be a trouble.
Do you want to add another point? Does that work, or do you actually have a little quicker?
Oh, I'll, I'll play Vanna for you.
Hello again, my name is Tim Gross. Again, I'm a senior project manager with Civil West Engineering. I have a lot of years of experience, we're not gonna talk about how I lay them. But, um, I still have my waters, so my presentation will only be half as long because I made the water. Um, but tonight we're gonna talk about, uh, three projects. One is Sheridan Road. Um, the other is the Hebrew Memorial Plaza, and we're gonna talk a little bit about the water system master plan. Give you an update about where we're at with each of those. Oh, she wants to keep going, she brought my water. And, uh, answer some questions for you, and then also give some direction on where you want us to take some of the design. So I gave you some hard copies, which I usually don't do to the end, because what happens is you all look at them like you're doing now, instead of paying attention to what I'm talking about. And so if you look up at the screen right there, you'll notice each of these slides will be up there as well, so hit it, Vanna.
Let's see, sorry, Vanna.
It's a space button. Okay, so, um, I wanna talk a little bit about Sheridan Road first and what we're looking at including in the project. Um, and so sort of the underlying premise of Sheridan Road is replacing the water line underneath it and upgrading that to a ten inch water line to help some of the water system issues. Um, but when doing that, the road be, have new curb and gutter associated with it, new paving. And then there's some options that we can have, could be sidewalks or multi-use paths. We're looking at putting street lighting, uh, down the street, and we've been talking with PGE about undergrounding utilities. And so there's all these different options that we can look at, and that's kind of what the premise of tonight's presentation is. Is, um, trying to get some guidance from the council on what you'd really like to see or some things that you would not like to see. Next, please. And so Sheridan Road is really interesting because the right of way, the width between the property lines where the city street is, uh, varies all over the place. And, um, and so it's in general about fifty feet wide. We have fifty feet to work with. It's wider than that in some areas, um, but I'm gonna say on average it's fifty feet. There are poles on both sides of the road. There's utility poles on the north side that have the electric power on them, and also some telephone and cable television. And on the south side, it's all telecommunications and, uh, cable television, so they're smaller poles. And so the distance between those poles also varies, and, um, I'm gonna say on average it's about thirty-three feet. So if you don't move the poles, the whole point of this is, we only have thirty-three feet to work with. Moving on. So this is what the road looks like now, and this is where you should look at your paper if you can't read the details on it. But the road changes how the width of the pavement is and where the poles are as you go from west to east. And so it's widest on the west side, if you get closer to Bridge Street. And as you go to the east, the road actually gets narrower, and the poles start to shift off to the south and the south side. And so it varies quite a bit, and that's all this is intended to represent is sort of what's there now. If you could go to the next one, please? And so we have these various alternatives that we looked at, and there could be even more than this. And so we wanted to look like what you could do if you don't move the poles. Now, I figured you'd get sticker shots when we get this right out of you. So I need to give you some explanation to what went into the cost of this. And so we do construction projects all the time, and so we have historical numbers for things like how much it costs to construct a foot of curb and gutter last year? How much did asphalt pavement cost? What is the overhead cost associated with mobilization of a contractor? Um, things like that, and that was what was built into these costs. Then I added thirty percent on top of that for a contingency, because we haven't designed anything, and there's a whole lot of things we just don't know. And so if you waited, say, for example, three years, the construction cost index has increased by six and a half percent per year for the last three years. That's a lot. And so when you start looking at a project that's, say, seven point three million dollars, six and a half percent of that is a lot of money. And so you have to think about the time value of money associated with construction and what we can expect to see in terms of inflation over the course of time. And so, um, these alternatives, I listed out sort of what they have and what they don't. Um, what you can do if you don't move the poles, what you can do if you move the poles just on one side, and what you can do if you move the poles on both sides. And I'm gonna skip to the end of this and tell you, there's nothing that you can't do, um, by leaving the poles there. All the options, you can leave the poles there and still do them all. It doesn't actually buy you anything except aesthetics, because they're not actually enough in the way to prevent you from doing what you wanna do, if that makes any sense.
I'm just, I'm gonna take a guess, have a look ahead. Um, this is the low cost one first, is that a good guess?
It is, I think, not the lowest cost, but it is the lower cost. And I have a summary of these later, so you'll be able to pull out just that sheet, and you'll sort of see what's all included in each one. And then, um, if you really get anal engineering with me, I actually have the entire spreadsheet I can. You don't need to see that. And, and I don't want you to get too hung up on the cost right now, because we need to talk about how to finance the various pieces of this, because they're not all being financed from the same place. And so, um, we need to look at what is important to you as a council and as a community to have on this road. And what I wanna tell you is, right now, the road is the slowest it will ever be. Anything I do to the road, we make it increase in speed, okay? And so the wider you make the road, the faster it goes. The narrower you make the road, the slower it goes. That's human nature. That's why interstate lanes are fourteen feet wide and, and regular roads are twelve feet wide. Um, and so as you start looking at these options, you start thinking about how the spaces work. So like the first three, four options, you're gonna notice the costs are all exactly the same, because all that changes is the striping and the pavement. But it, it, it changes how you use the road, and it changes how the driver thinks about the road when they go down it. And we can talk a little bit more about that. Driving is very psychological. Uh, when you talk to traffic engineers, they think about human behavior. And they, they try and design road systems so that based on human behavior, you can get them to slow down. So have you ever driven up to a speed bump where they have these bars painted in front of them? And they, they get smaller and narrower as you get further away from the speed bump. The idea is that it makes you think you're going faster as you're going through it, sort of like the Millennium Falcon with, with stars, okay? That's a psychological impact to a driver to make them slow down. So we can do those things on Sheridan Road, and you're concerned with, you know, bikers and pedestrians and vehicles, obviously it's a, it's a collector route. You need to be able to get vehicles in and out, but you're also concerned with multi-modal transportation. People need to safely bike on it. So would you like them to share the lane with the cars, or would you like them on their own? Do you want pedestrians right up against the curb, or do you like having a green space between them and the road? Those are the things I want you to think about, not so much the cost, although that's important too. But what's important to you, because when you build this road, this road will be here for a hundred years. You know, as an engineer, I think of like way down the road. I'd better be dead before most of the stuff I have at times is over. Um, and so you're doing the same thing here, you're building a road, you're spending a lot of money on it, and you need to think about what it's gonna be like in the future. So let's, let's move along, stay on this one that we were just on, scroll back down a little.
Down, okay.
The one we were just looking at, you're going on Gretchen. There you go. Keep going. So this is, um, exactly the road section that's there now. It's built exactly the same way. This is how wide the road is up by Bridge Street. It has sidewalks on both sides, poles on both sides, and you can stripe it any number of ways. In this particular instance, we show bike lanes and no parking. That may or may not meet some of your goals, you know? Having cars parked in the street will slow traffic, um, because it narrows the road. So why don't you scroll up for me, please?
Down, up means down.
We're always gonna be gathering them. Um, and so the second alternative is exactly the same thing, the price is exactly the same. But in this instance, we have enough room where we can put parking on one side, and then you can use shared lane markings in the, in the road surface. This is very common in Portland, Eugene, they have them in Newport. And the idea really is to just let people know that there's also bikes in the road. And to a lesser extent, it shows the people on bikes where to ride, they're supposed to ride down the middle of the shared lane markings. Um, and so that's an option where you can have both transportation lanes on the same cross section. Why don't you keep going, please? And so we had some rendering, this is what that would look like, parking on one side and shared lane markings on either side. In this particular instance, we whacked out the utility poles on the south, so you can kind of get a gist for what it looks like. The utility undergrounding, um, you don't have, uh, as much risk of tsunami and earthquakes here as they do in Newport. Um, and so the utility undergrounding is primarily gonna be aesthetics. Um, it really improves the landscape. And so in this particular instance, it's exactly the same one we were just looking at the cross section of before, this is just the rendering. Shana was here, she did these floors, thank you very much. So how about you keep going, please?
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
So if, if it is, it, it's solely an aesthetic thing, if you can't do, you couldn't, I mean, it looks to me like it would give you more space. Like sidewalk space, but so if it's very under that, you can still build sidewalks, right?
You can build a sidewalk around a pole. And so as long as I have four feet to allow, um, the ADA accessibility around the pole, um, I can have the sidewalk in the pole. Or the pole in the sidewalk, and you'll see later on, we show a multi-use path, and it's eight feet wide. It takes up that outside space, the five feet of sidewalk and the three feet of green space. Now you have solid pavement from one edge of the right of way to the other then, but you also have an eight-foot multi-use path that they can use on one side of the road or the other, or both sides. And occasionally you would have a pole with it, but you'd still have five or six feet to drive around that pole in that multi-use path. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's why you don't actually need to move the pole to have any of these options, although you can shift the road quite a ways to the south if you eliminated the poles in the south, but then you sort of build all the stuff on the north side of the road. You end up with the same thing, it just shifts it to one side or the other. Um, this is just, again, a different lane configuration, you can put a center turn lane in if that's a desire. Um, this is oft, oft, often something that's done where there's a lot of turning movements and you have rear-end accidents because people are really cruising along and they, they hit people. We, um, we did this on, um, Marine Science Drive and, um, um, another road, the name I can't forget, remember? Um, where it was a downhill slope and trucks would come up behind cars and they'd be taking a left-hand turn and scare the daylights out of everybody.
Six through.
Yeah, and so we, we put center turn lane in, and that eliminated all of those rear-end accidents. It also increases the speed. This would be your fastest option right here. People would be flying on a road like this.
Oh, man.
Why don't you keep going, please? Because it's wide open space. There's no parked cars, there's no bikers, it's just this huge piece of pavement. This is similar, um, but we have a pa, a parking lane just on the one side, but you have multi-use paths. Um, it's really not a lot different than the sidewalk one, other than you just have a lot more room for pedestrians and bicyc, bike, bikers on the side. It eliminates the shared lane markings from the lane, so if there's concern about bikers sharing the lane with, with traffic, this is a good option. And, and they're on both sides.
And, and this doesn't have any green in this option, right?
It has no what?
Green, no, no.
There's no green, other than people's front yards. I mean, this road has a lot of front yards to it. It's not like you're gonna have just this huge piece of pavement, but it's gonna be a fifty-foot wide piece of pavement in this particular option. You know, if you have a, a three-foot green space there, you could also do boulevard trees. We didn't show that, but you could do that. Um, having that green space there gives a lot of options for things like that.
Is there, uh, much of a difference in safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in the multi-use path setup versus pedestrian sidewalk and either a bike lane or sharing the road?
I don't have any statistics on that. There's a bazillion multi-use paths around the Newport area. I've never heard of, um, any serious injuries of bikers getting hit, or pedestrians getting hit by bikers. What I hear about is bikers cruising across driveways and getting hit by cars leading drivers. That is very common. Um, the nice thing about a, um, shared use path is that, uh, vehicles that are exiting driveways can generally see the bikers better because they're further out, but I got hit by a car driving down the sidewalk on my bike. Um, somebody coming out and not seeing me and cutting me. And so that is common. We had many accidents of people on bicycles driving on the sidewalk getting hit by cars exiting driveways. You can move right along.
Did Shana make renderings of these ones? Did Shana make renderings of all these alternatives?
Not every one, about four of them.
They're kind of a visual.
Yep, um, and so now we shift the type of improvement. Um, and you'll notice the cost went up. Trying to think about where I'm at here. This is, um, oh, this is basically just the full pavement section between the poles of multi-use paths on both sides, yeah. Um, and so the reason the cost is more is because the multi-use path has a lot more concrete to it than a five-foot bike, or a five-foot, um, sidewalk does. Again, consider this project is forty-one hundred feet long. It's quite long. Goes from basically Bridge Street just shy of Highway eighteen, and so there's a lot of quantities involved in this. So how about you move along, please?
Get along, doggy.
So here we finally get to the point where we're able to remove poles on one side. Why don't you have a question, please?
Well, all of these, it looks like the street, uh, lights are every hundred and fifty feet. Is there any others, choices?
I mean, yes, it was, so this is a very high-level cost estimate, and what I mean by that is, I drew in the infrastructure that would normally in a street like this. It's not in the place it's gonna be, but, you know, if the curb moves, it could be one way or the other. I still have four thousand one hundred feet of curb on one side. For the, the purposes of estimating the, uh, streetlights, um, it is really the cost of setting the basis and the conduit for the full length of the project. So if we wanna add more streetlights or less streetlights, I would obviously add or remove from that, but the conduit wouldn't change, because it goes from one end to the other. So it's not a big change, and, um, this is one of those unknowns for me, is that most electric providers have, um, a contract with their community to serve, uh, streetlights, either on a wood pole or a decorative light, and they own the light, and they pay for the electricity, and you pay them fifty bucks a month for a light or whatever it is. I don't actually know how that works here. Um, and so I would suspect that PGE has the same program where.
There's three options.
Okay, so there's one little thing we would refine. It's not super important nor costly in it, but the spacing of the lights is based on manufacturer recommendations on streetlights. So once upon a time, I did a project called Anchor Street, and we put in decorative acorn lights, and we followed the manufacturer spacing guidelines exactly. They were seventy-five feet apart, and you could land a seven forty-seven on that baby in the pouring rain. So it was super bright, and that was not what the city wanted. They wanted enough light so that you could, pedestrian can be seen at any point, but not so bright that you could read a book. And so basically what it means is you have a light on a corner and a light mid-block, and depending on what the corner looks like, you might have two lights, depending on how wide it is. Yeah, the blocks aren't the same, and so you have these guidelines, because the road curves. You think about this road being straight, it's not. There's this big hook in it, and so you have to think about how your light broadcasts. So the last crossing that I did, designed for, um, Highway twenty, we did a lighting analysis. And I can tell you, based on the height of the light, the location of the light, where a tree is, how wide the road is, how much light you get in different places. So for the purposes of this estimate, I set a hundred and fifty feet, but when I actually do the design, I'll probably do a lighting analysis. And this is the light you want. This is how tall it is. This is how much it broadcasts. I can give you an idea about how many lumens that generates, and you're like, this is how bright I want it. I don't want it any brighter than that, but I want it this bright, all right? Tell me exactly how many lights I need and exactly where to put them. Okay, probably way more than you needed, so. Um, so this is the first one where we've eliminated the lights, or excuse me, the poles on the south side. And the road now, instead of being thirty-four feet wide, is forty-one feet wide. So it allows us to do, in theory, we couldn't get a forty-one-foot street in between the two, uh, poles before, but you only have a multi-use path on one side. And so, you know, people who normally have a sidewalk now on one side of the road won't because there's sidewalks on both sides of the road now. You only have it on one side and you could have two-way traffic on that. But it allows you to do parking on both sides of the road. This is the only option that allows you to do that. And so parking is of value. You want parking all the way down the street? This is really the only one where you have enough room to be parking on both sides.
If the pole, if there were no poles, could you have sidewalks on both sides too?
No, I don't have enough room. I only have eight feet. So there's not enough room to get sidewalks on both sides and parking on both sides, unless you made it really, really narrow again. So you could have a five-foot sidewalk on, right against the back of the curb. And the sidewalk is right up against the property lines and fifty feet wide, so then I have forty, thirty-nine feet or something like that. And then, you know, you could have narrower lanes and narrow parking lanes. You could probably shoehorn that in. Doesn't quite meet what I wanna see for a design standard in terms of like widths. But you could probably make it work if you wanted.
And have the slow traffic down.
If you had cars parked all the way down it. If there's nobody parked on it, it would be a super freeway. Cause you'd have forty feet of pavement width. Yep.
Okay.
The wider the road, the faster they go. That's all you gotta remember. The wider they rode. So that's why they often do boulevards. Where you'll see roads where they need to get a lot of traffic moving, right? So they'll have two lanes, but then have this giant grass strip in between. Part of it's aesthetics, part of it's psychological. The road is narrower.
Do they have those boulevards too because of like, in seventy-five years, the road may be used differently than it is now? And maybe they will need a turning line, right? So then they go through and they remove all that stuff and then.
I had a, um, project many moons ago now. This is back in Minnesota, City of Farmington, Main Street is what it was called. It was this line. Uh, we designed a center boulevard down the middle of it. That was a stormwater ditch.
Oh, yeah.
We could do that here too, if you really want traffic slower. I mean, it could be shoehorned in. You know, this is super flat. It would have to be a combination of stormwater ditch and center line. And then you have twice as much curb as you do now. It would not be your cheapest option by far. It would be cool. It'd be cool.
Yeah, it would.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want you to think these are your only options. You know, if you see something that's like, that's why I have all these dimensions in here. You'll take this home later, like, well, why can't you do this? Probably couldn't. I didn't think about it. I'm here to show you. You know, we could do that. Um, that's why the dimensions are here. Uh, so yeah, this is eight point five. It's obviously more than the last one, but that's because there's so much pavement. So can you keep going, please? And you're gonna see that they're all pretty similar. Um, they're just different striking configurations. Um, you can keep going. Here we got all the poles gone. Um, so in that last option, we actually shifted the entire road to the south. People in the south are not gonna like that a whole lot, a whole lot. But here with the poles gone, we actually shifted back into the middle again. Now, this is thirty-four feet wide. We have this exact same cross-section earlier. It just has poles in it. And so this is what it would look like without the poles. It's just a bunch of pavement from side to side. But you'll notice it's nine point three million. And the reason for that is the utility undergrounding component of this. Later on in this, you'll see my little chart. You'll see how much of the utility undergrounding is, is a part of this. You can keep going. There's a little rendering here about what that looks like.
That's nice.
Um, and so.
Is that your truck, Tim? Is that your truck?
That is our exact survey truck. Yes, yes. Yeah, it did not show up in the renderings until this morning. So, there was some other fancy car on there before. Um, so that's generally what it would look like, other than.
We thought we'd have a little fun with the renderings, you know?
So, sorry, okay, so this is multimodal.
On one side and sidewalk on the other, yep.
And but there's no buffer between the multimodal and the road.
There'd be a curb.
There is a curb.
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't tell if it was flush.
Well, it doesn't necessarily show a curb, but there'd be a curb there for protection.
And so then lane, lane, parking, buffer, sidewalk. Got it?
That's nice.
But this one's not underground utilities.
Well, the south would.
This cost is not quite correlating to this drawing because this drawing still shows the poles on the north side. So that nine point three mil is for undergrounding all the power on the north side too.
Both sides, okay.
Yeah, and you should have that one, but this one otherwise best represented that particular option. So just ignore that. We could like, light that pole out.
Well, I think there's one coming up.
Yeah, I think that pole is coming.
And again, these are variations on the same thing. Center turn lane, two driving lanes. This is probably your fastest because it's just wide open pavement. Um, I know I've said that a bunch of times already. Um, here, like, here is basically all the poles gone with, um, the cross-section just like it is now. Except you can put shared lane markings down in the driving lanes, so.
And there's no parking though?
No, I'm sorry. That's bike lanes. See?
No parking.
Yeah, this, this one has bike lanes. We can shoehorn bike lanes in here and you have sidewalks on either side. Um, but there's no parking in this option, yeah. That's why I wrote it all down because I knew I was gonna say it wrong. And here's the shared lane. This is the one I was thinking about. This is the shared lane markings with, um, the parking lane. That's the rep- that's the view you saw before, except that one has the pole and this one doesn't. So, and see, this is. Ninety-two and both sides. Yeah, so this has sidewalks in it. So you'll notice the old one is like nine point five. This one's nine point one. That's just concrete. Four thousand one hundred feet, three feet wide, times two of concrete to make a multi-use path versus a sidewalk. Now, we could do the multi-use path in asphalt too. I just didn't calculate that out. But this is more about what you want to see the road looking like and sort of understanding what the costs associated with that are. Um, there're only one or two more. So here is the one that has no poles. This has the sidewalks on both sides. Uh, this is a nice, this is a nice option. If, if I was gonna build it, this is what I would do. Me. Um, give you a little bit of everything.
Parking on one side, that's it.
And then, um, this is option twelve, which is the center turn lane again with the sidewalk and no poles. And then there's one last picture, this one. And I didn't have a cross-section for this one, but this is a multi-use path on both sides, parking on one side. And then, um, no, no, no. Sidewalks on both sides. Bike lanes on both sides, parking on one side, and then two driving lanes. And so, a lot of pavement, but again, you were able to shoehorn basically everything in. Now, those are five-foot sidewalks right on the back of the curb. But there's a bike lane in between them and the driving lane, so there's a buffer zone there.
Yes.
Um.
But, but no green strip. So again, if you're looking for decorating, you know, aesthetic aesthetics, that's hardcore asphalt and concrete there.
About once a year, you're gonna smoke a biker with a car door. That's the only thing I don't. I've seen it happen many times. People open a car door and they get it. I mean, you see it in the movies and clips and all that kinda stuff, but it does happen. Um, people don't look behind them when they open their car.
That works fast.
That does. Yeah, it does.
It would be a fast one too, because it's very wide. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, there are no bikers in those lanes. The cars will use them.
That's some crazy passing as a result, yeah.
Yep, so you can scroll up. This is actually the cost estimate that you have in there. It's easier to read in your sheet. And it just breaks down all sort of components of the project based on alternatives. Um, you can see my giant spreadsheet. I sort of divved it out behind it. If you have, again, any desire to see that, I can send it away.
Please, somebody call him. Somebody ask.
You know, I would, I hate saying this, but that thirty percent contingency is really high. Um, but I want you to understand that I, there's just a lot of the stuff I don't know because we haven't decided yet. Um, the, my real, all, my real number based on real construction dollars is the first one, without the thirty percent contingency on it. Those are based on actual constructed projects. Those are numbers right out of bids that we opened in the last two years in this area. Um, yes?
Okay, so, back to flooding and stormwater and stuff. And, and we, will that all be updated with this too? Like, even if we didn't do any of the bio-spoils or any of that fun stuff that I love, then we will put catch basins in.
Oh, yeah.
Or at least on all the corners that are all updated.
The design here includes a full storm drain reconstruction from end to end, including construction of a water quality basin in that green space next to the wastewater plant. That's built into this.
Okay, good.
And that's the lowest part of the road, I think.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
And looping of the water line?
And replacement of the water line.
Looping.
The looping is happening.
Looping, so it could end up.
Well, that's all, that's happening with another project. We would tie to that.
Yeah.
The only thing that doesn't get replaced is the sanitary sewer. The public works crew did televise that and it's in good condition. The only thing included in this that you see in sanitary sewer is basically replacing all the manhole tops. Cause, um, normally we'd have an adjustment cost for adjusting the manhole, but I think it's likely these manhole covers are past their useful life.
Yeah.
And so for contractors, it's just easier to take it off, put a new one on, adjust it to grade, and you're good to go. And it's not a very big cost. I mean, we can take that out if we need to. It's just that's what that represents.
I think it's important for the city council to think, yeah, about the money, of course. But th- this is a major thoroughfare into the city. And the road is going to change how this road is used in, maybe even in twenty years, or like, or less. So it is very important, this is very important, not just for today, but for your immediate future and, and going forward. I mean, I have no idea in fifty years how this road will be used. But I know that there's been people who have come forward and talked to others and Sheridan Road is a big, big deal.
Yep.
So this is very exciting to have something to look at.
So if you look at the cross-sections and you'll see that, that they're, the ones that are the same cost, are basically the same thing and a change of strippings. The thing to understand is you can change how the road works just by changing how it stripes pretty significantly. Um, and that is a very low-cost number. Now, obviously, the wider your pavement is, the more options you have, but, you know, thirty-foot bu- thirty-four-foot wide road is not bad. You can do a lot with that. Um, I don't necessarily need any consensus from the council today, but for me to advance any design, I would really like one. You know, and I don't know if it's possible for you to just chat about it at some point, like, you know what, this is what we really like? Or, hey, can you compare these two a little bit more? Oh, you got your hand up first, I'm sorry.
Yes, you did. Me second.
You know, you're, you know, lovely designs. Have you taken a look at where Sheridan Road meets Bridge Street? That's already a clog point. I don't know what you folks call it, but the point where it gets clogged. If, uh, we're gonna be adding more buildings on Sheridan Road to increase traffic, they still gotta get to Bridge Street somehow. I foresee a problem sooner or later with that intersection.
So, um, back to the strapping. I showed center turn lanes. You don't have to have, say, a bypath or parking mark all the way to the end. I guess my recommendation in that particular location would be to mark a left turn lane on Bridge Street. So you have free, free right turns and people taking a left turn. I don't think the intersection goes through a Sheridan and it's a T, right? Yeah?
Yep.
Um, so you'd be able to have people take left turns. Um, a, a lot of this will include, um, I have pedestrian crossings and improvements at every intersection, included in this cost. And striping for all the pedestrian crossings. So you have a lot of mid-block crossings on Sheridan Road that are legal crossings now. Um, you're just simply marking them so they're more obvious. That's another thing that would be very important to do with that intersection, is making sure that it's appropriately marked and the pedestrian ramps are appropriately constructed. That's a tight corner. There's a giant, giant, giant pole right there that needs to come down and all that is utilities redone. And PGE was really concerned about that. It's also one of their big priorities to see that pole changed. So that will help because it opens up some space for pedestrians and the pedestrian ramps, so.
At what point in this process will you do a traffic study so we can kinda get a better idea of maybe what, what design would work the best?
So, I do not have a traffic study in the scope of work, but I would suspect the county probably has numbers that they've probably done that I can go and look at. It doesn't really change the design at all. It's more informative than anything. Um, if it's something that you really want, we could go out and do comps.
Well, or we could do a speed trailer for free.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The sheriff's office.
Uh, will the speed trailer track vehicle comps?
Yeah.
Well, that's a real, that's a basic thing then. I really advise doing it during the school year.
Okay.
Because it changes traffic volumes. You're not a hu- huge, um, tourist location, so that's not a big deal, but definitely get it during the week during the school year.
Well, we also need to consider the future because we have, um, projects that have already been earmarked for, um, development and we know are going to have more traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
In the near future.
Mm-hmm. And we, um, some of the utilities associated with those, we've considered part of this design and how that'll actually connect to what we're proposing here. Um, the turning radius on the corners is larger than it was before because back in the day, they sort of connect the curve and then put a quick little radius there and everybody would hop them with their cars and everything, so they're all fit to be raised. And now we made the intersection slightly bigger for itself. Um, some of those things are just typical design standards that you would normally incorporate when you design the road today. I don't know how it was designed in the past. Sometimes they didn't really design it. They just put the curves in and paved it. Um, but it will help some of the movement of both vehicles and pedestrians and how they interact with each other when you have good design standards. Because the design standards of, the design standards that we use are intended to improve visibility, improve, um, accessibility, making sure that, you know, people yield to the right people that sign appropriately, so they understand who has the right of way, those, those sorts of things. Any other questions before I move on? And so, um, I don't really wanna take the design any further until I get some consensus on what we'd like to see. So sooner than later, I'd like to hear back. Um, cause I'd really like to bid the project in the spring, if we can get the financing together to construct the project. And so that's something I'd like to.
That's love.
And, um, and we can get a shovel-ready project, cause sometimes you need a shovel-ready project, you get financing.
Yes.
And so maybe you don't build it in the spring, but that would be a goal of having. You would always wanna bid this in February or March. Because it's such a large project that you want the contractors, the big ones, to put it on their construction schedule. And you'd get better pricing. And so there's strategy in how you bid projects that reduce your costs. That would be one of the goals. So if we didn't do it just early spring this year, you have a shovel-ready project, we can do it early spring the next year. Or use for grant applications or whatever the case might be for how we would fund the project.
But it'll probably cost more then.
I mean, by the construction cost index, yes. I mean, I can tell you with a high level of accuracy how much it will cost if you delay it three years, once we get the design done. Cause then I'd have a really good handle on what the cost would be.
Yeah.
So, there's always fluctuation in bidding. And so you try and reduce your bidding risk by having very few questions for the contractor, making it very convenient for them, I know that sounds horrible, and putting it out on the street in the time of year when they're looking for work. And then you get your best price.
So, so if, if I could add and just repeat what Tim said, that, that there will be a time when we need a decision, right? A direction, what, what you want with the asphalt. You know, for example, if you like the aesthetics and you're gonna have green grass and trees and the whole thing, but if you think in the future it could change the functionality and you may wanna have the whole fifty-foot of, of asphalt, then you just re-stripe it over the years. If you need, you know, a lot, a lot of different versions, but.
There are no fifty-foot asphalt options.
What's that?
There were no fifty-foot asphalt.
Well, asphalt and concrete, well, you know, but, uh, but I know you've been here a long time today already, so maybe it might warrant an actual work section and actually dive into the sections, because we will need specific direction. This is what we want. Go design it, right? So, I know you've been here for a long time, but that's ultimately what we would need to get from you.
And just so people understand where it says private utility underground, underground means maybe, underground, whatever it says. That isn't taken care of by a, that price is still maybe picked up by the city, even though it says price, or private, it's still.
Typically, what's included in that, because it's based on projects we've done in the last couple of years. And it's most cost-effective to do it when you're doing it here, is you would put the conduit in the ground that is necessary for the utilities to populate at a later point. You put in switchgear, transformer bases, uh, vaults. Oftentimes, the, the bases, the transformer bases and the switchgear and the vaults are provided by, um, the utility. I've had instances where they provided all of the conduit as well. Um, which is great. Um, conduit, the cost of it itself is pretty insignificant compared to the installation of it. And the utility companies, I never have had a utility company offer to install it. And so, um, typically what you'll do is you'll put all the stuff that needs to go underground on their behalf and the poles will stay. And then when you have all your stuff in the ground, they come in, they set their transformers down, they, um, they pull all their conduits or conductors. They energize everything. Now, there's a piece in this cost that I don't have and that's actually connecting between that underground, um, electric and, and phone and fiber to the house. There's a cost there that I have not been able to calculate in the thirty percent. It would fall in there. It's not ridiculous. I got a lot. I got a lot of runaround from PGP. I'm on their third project manager now and they finally realized, like, we really need to underground. And so we've done this many times. And so what you end up doing is getting a temporary easement from the property owner. You often have to go over to this meter box, you have to change the outside of the meter box and take the overhead mask off, you underground a conduit to it and you come up underneath the meter box. Usually what you can do is you run your telephone and your cable to the side of the building and you just terminate up a conduit. And then it's the same thing again. The utility company comes in, they switch in their meter between the overhead mask and the underground. The phone guy comes in, they put their little box on, they connect it all, and then you come up and you take all that junk off and all the overhead stuff. So again, poles are still there. So you might underground these utilities and these poles are there for 10 years. I'm not joking, I've had them last for a long time. Because the utilities have to get all these people underground, there's 65 properties on this street, I want to say, something like that. You know, 65 undergrounds to each one of these buildings. And then only when you're done, the poles come off.
So is that at the property owner's expense, if it goes to their property, or at the utility owner's expense?
It's typically the city because you're driving the undergrounding. Again, the utility company is pretty good about sharing some of the costs of that. And what I mean is like supplying some of the equipment, but you still have to bury the conduit. You have to go through the design, you gotta get it blessed by them. There's an electric permit that's gonna be pulled for every single house because you're modifying the meter box. It's very complicated, undergrounding is horrible, I hate them. But it can be done, it is quantifiable, I can describe to you exactly how it works. They gave us horror stories, oh, if you touch the meter box, you're gonna have to go in and change out the fuse box, you're gonna have to go in and change out the, I'm like, that's not how it works. No, we touch the meter box and that's it. The only permit we have is for switching from an overhead mask to an underground one and that's it. It's very, very black and white. It's just, you might go across their daisies or you might take out the memorial tree that they planted 50 years ago. Those are the things that are complicated. It's dealing with each property. So typically, we bid them as a unit price by property. For Sheridan Road, the unit price is X and it includes undergrounding a conduit for electric telephone cable, bringing in an underground conduit for that, taking off the overhead mask, capping it, doing the conversion, getting the electric permit, restoring the entire property. And you bid it as a unit. And typically, you have a general contractor, that might be the electrician or the undergrounder. And then they hire a subcontractor, either the electrician or the undergrounder, and they work together and that's how you do it. So it's complicated.
So Heidi, I have a question for you.
Yes?
Once we have a design that we choose, then we go to ODOT for a grant?
Well, we, I'm already working on getting some funds.
Oh, good, so.
Yeah, it would be nice, like Tim and Kevin say, for you to pick something and then I can show people things.
And there's easy changes and there's hard changes, right? So if you pick an option that has a 30-foot wide street in between the poles and you're like, we want underground. I'm like, okay, so we go down the road and they're like, I don't want underground. Okay, well, we just leave it like it is and we still have the same option. So there's not like this big design change. But if you're like, we're gonna put the 40-foot wide, 40-foot wide pavement and we're gonna shift the road to the south and those south poles are gonna go. All right, we'll design that one, start designing it, and you're like, we're not gonna take those south poles out. Roll out the design, start over again. So that's what I'm talking about. You wanna think about that a little bit of risk, you know, risk reduction about if we have to change something. Maybe we can go into the two cool projects, yes. So can you scroll up a little bit for me?
It is pretty confusing that you keep saying scroll up.
Yeah, can you scroll down for me?
Just say scroll.
Who is Anna?
Not swirl, just squirrel.
The water system master plan. Yeah, you may or may not know exactly what a water system master plan is. You know, traditionally, a water system master plan is to identify how much water your community is gonna need in the future based on growth. Okay, I mean, that's like the basics of it. These days, it includes a seismic risk assessment, it includes a water concentration plan. We model how your water system will work so that we can understand if this thing over here happens, what will be the impact to your water system. And so what we've done to date is the old water model that you had from your previous consultants was done on a water model program that was so old that was no longer supported. We tried to import it and it got super corrupted, so we just built it again because your water system is relatively straightforward. So we have a new water model that we built for your community. We're gonna be working with staff to truth that. What I mean by that is we'll have somebody go out to a fire hydrant, they'll open it up, they'll do a static pressure and flow test on it, then they'll open up another hydrant, they'll do a dynamic static and flow test on it and we'll make sure everything works. The model includes Stony Mountain and how that raw water transmission line comes in your existing water plant, includes all your storage, includes the intake on the South Yam Hill. And so there's some, more truthing data that we want. We want to find out what your biggest water consumers are. And I know you have new meters that actually attract your customers and their locations. And so we don't even know who they are or anything, but I'm gonna try and work with them to get the magnitude, longitude, and consumption from that and that will make a really cool, very accurate model. And what that allows us to do is if you forecast that you're gonna have X amount of units developing in this part of your community, we can plunk that in there and we can see where you might have water system capacity issues. So that's water system model, excuse me, water master plan 101. You have some extra stuff. You have some water quality issues in the South Yam Hill this year. And it has been communicated to us that you have a strong desire to incorporate Stony Mountain into your water supply system. And so we have a special component of the water master plan to look at what that would look like. What it would look like at the time of the reservoir, how you transport that water down to the existing water treatment plant and/or do you need to build a new water treatment plant and what does that look like? So that's a piece of that. I've been up to Stony Mountain and have found all but, I think, six of your spring rights. Photograph them, GPS them, confirm their locations, make sure they're actually where they're supposed to be. That will be included in the master plan, just as sort of record. Because some of these descriptions are way back, way back from the water rights and I don't know how they came up with the X-Y locations, I don't know, but hunted all up through the woods looking for those one day. And so we've done that. We also have all of the GIS information that your previous consultant has gathered for you. And so they sent that to us and we built a new water system infrastructure map, GIS water system infrastructure map. And so I was meaning to plunk that into a geodatabase and send that to Heidi so that she and her Public Works people can actually operate it on their own, which is possible. I have not done that yet, but that will be one of the deliverables we'll give them quickly. But that GIS infrastructure map shows existing UGB boundaries, existing city boundaries. It shows zoning and it basically includes all that background information that we use in this planning document. And it was really important for us to be able to update that, so we have that sort of at our fingertips. So we're right at that moment in time right now that when we truth this model and we project growth, we'll be able to start putting in projected projects and advancing that master plan. Our goal is to have something to the council for review by January 15th on that, so it's like winter work for us.
Does that do water treatment plant figure in that also?
We would look at what that would, what is needed there, you know, so it's a capacity-related plan. And so it's important to look at the age of your existing water plant, how much water that plant can produce. Is it able to take water from Stony Mountain and treat that water? Or, you know, do you need to do something different to that water when you get it? Is it more cost-effective to put in a new plant or retrofit the plant that you have? So, you know, there's sort of that moving target that we have and, you know, you answer one question and it sort of informs the next one. And so the master plan will sort of walk you through that and then give you order of magnitude costs associated with that. So obviously, I can't design a water treatment plant and tell you exactly what the cost of that's gonna be. But there's really great guidance from Morgan Health Authority and other organizations in the country where I can, based on flow and type of treatments and those types of things, come up with some costs associated with that. So you have an expectation of what that might look like. And then, you know, you project that out over years and you can get an idea about what the cost over time will be. So this is just some screenshots of the water system model. This is what it looks like. And these are actually the sheets that poor Gary is gonna have to go through to make sure that everything is connected the right way. Because if the pipelines aren't connected the right way, the model is obviously not right. And so we can only use the maps that we have and ideally, we have Public Works look at it and confirm that it's accurate. So if you keep going, please. This is the infrastructure, GIS infrastructure map. I created one for Newport and we were able to use our handheld devices and zoom in on any place in the city and I could walk up to a water meter in the dark. It's a beautiful tool, I have a little story to share on that. Embarcadero Resort, I don't know if you've ever heard of it, is right on the bayfront.
Yes.
And the water line that crosses the bay goes right through the middle of the resort, right between two buildings. And we had a fire hydrant, the bolts that held the top of the fire hydrant down had corroded because the soils there are ridiculously caustic because it's all filled. And it blew the top of the hydrant off and was shooting 2,500 gallons a minute up into the air. And it took us, me and the utility superintendent, Melanie, it took us two hours to find out all these big valves and shut them down. They were under cars, they were out in parking lots. We had to figure out which ones actually were associated with that particular section of water line. In the meantime, it flowed through the resort, flooded the basement with three feet of water, wiped out their deck going down to the marina. So fast forward two years in the future, we did a big project at Embarcadero, we replaced a bunch of storm drain and that old water line down there is as thick as concrete. And because of the equipment, it broke right underneath the Embarcadero Resort building. And we had since then completed our infrastructure mapping, we GPSed every single valve, took us exactly 20 minutes to shut off the same valves. We knew exactly where they were, this was the middle of the night, we walked up to them in the dark. I knew that was one right here, there was a car in the way, we moved the car and there it was. That's what you gotta do. So this sounds like a frill. It is one of the best tools for improving the efficiency and performance of your public work staff and they could probably get. And so we will advance this GIS map as part of the mapping process and actually get it as a tool that they can use. So you can keep going, please. So this is what I was talking about, the plan will include the usual stuff, but Stony Mountain as well as shifting the water supply away. That's all that slide was really meant to say.
The usual stuff.
The usual stuff. I mean, every master plan has the same stuff. So the Keepert Memorial Plaza. So I did some design on this earlier in the summer and I apologize, I actually wanted to have it further than this. What this drawing represents is we've done survey in this area.
Get rid of the title.
There you go. It's also in your handout, by the way.
I gave him the candidate.
So the little shaded area is obviously the plaza. And we had some direction to try and build the sidewalk down there as well as protect the foundations of the plaza itself. So the foundations are being undermined every time the spring floodwaters run out from behind that wall down there. And so, and not only that, because there was a building there, the plaza was built up to the building, so it actually crosses over the property line. And so if you go down there on the northwest corner, you can see a property pan. You can look right down the plaza and you can see about three feet of it hangs over the property line. And so the goal was to protect the footings and actually move the outside of that plaza back so that it was within city property. And so the design concept includes basically a buried retaining wall put in behind the existing foundation wall, protecting those footings from erosion. Because the footings would actually be set on top of the retaining wall. Instead of having a cast complex footing that the water would be able to scour out. And so it's just a concrete retaining wall, pretty simple, but it would be below the flood elevation. So when the waters flow out, it can scour down as far as it wants to and will still never get to the base of the wall. And then just a sidewalk behind it. It gets complicated because it's a floodplain. And so without doing some sort of floodplain mitigation, you really can't fill any soil in the floodplain because you have an adverse effect on the floodplain. So the portion of the sidewalk that extends underneath the bridge and connects into the existing stairs that's just in the parking lot of the IGA there, right now is being proposed as a boardwalk. Because then there's no fill associated with that. You put a concrete piling in, you build a boardwalk, and away you go. That's gonna be a maintenance nightmare because there's all kinds of debris that's gonna float out into there in the spring when you get the floods. I had talked to Heidi about that a little bit and there's a desire to put in like a kayak launch or something down to the river there. We could do the earthwork for that launch, even if there's nothing else done except actually moving the dirt and then be able to fill in underneath the bridge here and still have a net zero effect on the floodplain. That's what I'd like to do, I tried doing that in CAD today and it decided it was gonna hate me and I couldn't get it done. But that's what I'm proposing to do as part of this advanced design. Now, there's boards that need to be replaced on the plaza. Those board replacements and these footing improvements have nothing to do with each other. And the reason I say that is you could move forward replacing those boards and not have any negative effect on fixing these footings. There is a way to do that, no problem. Put them down with leg screws when you're ready to move that ridge, that beam back. You take all the leg screws off the end, you slide the beam back, cut the boards off. That's simple. Or you just don't extend the boards as far and then you don't have to cut them off at all, you just simply move the beam back. So I want you to make sure that that is holding up the plaza and fixing those boards, you can go ahead and do that and it will not affect what I'm doing here nor will that keep you from replacing the boards because the plaza doesn't look any different on the top.
You mean the deck boards, right?
The deck boards, yeah.
I thought those were pretty big timbers.
They're like a four-by-six timber or a four-by-eight timber.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, on edge. And they're all nailed down now, which is not how I do it now, I use a long leg screw because they always pull those nails up, we used to have to go with jackhammers and drive them back down again on the boardwalks. Leg screws work a lot better because they don't pull up. So the beams underneath are in good shape, really distance a matter of taking off a board, putting down a board. You just stop at three feet short of where you are before, whatever distance you need to be short. The footings and the beam are on your property. So you could actually stop the boards right at the edge of the beam and then only move that beam back three feet. We just unscrew them on the edge, move the beam back, screw them back on again. The only thing we wouldn't want properly put up would be a handrail until it's done, you could put a temporary handrail up. And so, so the next advance with this was I'd like to actually do the earthwork, excuse me, calculations to the west and get another design concept in to Heidi because we want it all to be ADA accessible as much as possible. And again, this is a project that I wouldn't do until the floods are gone. This is something I'd do right in the middle of summer next year, so nobody has to worry about it. But it's pretty straightforward construction, there are just some moving that's associated with it. And so you keep scrolling a little bit, I just have a cross-section of what the retaining wall looks like. That's the one on the right there. It just, most of it gets buried under the ground. Like when you look at it, all you're gonna see is a strip of concrete. Because there's a wall buried under the ground and the piling for the bridge deck will sit right on top of it. So this is also the sidewalk that goes up, it gets really, really steep as it gets to the parking lot. And so I need to try and shift that whole sidewalk a little bit further to the west so that I can make it a lot flatter and try and make ADA, so people can be able to access it without it being created. So those are the three projects.
You know, real quick, although not necessarily part of this, but yet, we, you know, there was a vision at one point in time with your plaza and Shawna did some renderings for us a year ago when we were proposing to be your engineer. But so you probably have seen some of these things, but we put that together for our open house that we had a couple of weeks ago and we're giving it as a gift, as some kind of, as an idea of what that ultimately might look like down there. So it's a gift to you and we appreciate Shawna's help and the vision of the city and working with you. So anyway, that's just something to take a look at.
Thank you.
There's a couple of small projects we're working on, we're helping Public Works do some city skate integration for some of their different remote facilities. We're working on some design standards as well so that we're better able to have some sustained development. It's all of the works in progress right now. So I think we have a QA.
Yeah, you have a general QA, but I'm just wondering if we're still in budget for the plaza engineering or are you asking for?
I'm not asking for anything else. I sort of had to put the brakes on it because I'm super, 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 super busy and I wasn't building it till the summer.
That's just such a limited fund, the park fund, so I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, I haven't touched it.
If you needed more money, then we're gonna ask these guys.
That is a really very straightforward design, so I don't expect any additional funds are gonna be necessary.
I think it would be really nice if you could give me an email about what you said about the plaza boards that can be replaced now because we have a very interested group in getting that information and I think that can help us with leverages and funds.
Yeah. I don't want to make any problems with the boards on, I don't think there's any way.
Yeah, we just, I think that there's some people waiting in the. Yeah, we just, I think that there's some people waiting in the wings that wanna know that the city's committed to going through with the process and that we've been doing the process, as you know, that those people are out there.
So, any questions on cool engineering stuff that we saw?
Yeah, this is a general question and answer period.
Brewery wastewater, wait on me.
So, we own the property, the city owns the property behind the plaza and we're looking at putting a parking lot in there. So, are we looking at access from that parking lot to the plaza? Do any of your engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
That's for the sidewalk with "and" basically. And that "and" is, I wish there was a parking lot design, it's just sort of, "and" is sort of that. Yeah, I hate, you know, so I hate to have to drag your sidewalk or your parking lot design because the sidewalk is sort of that.
Kayla?
I know you'd like us to give you an answer or a design choice for Sheridan Road. Is there, I can ask you this after the meeting too, but is there one that you would recommend us to? Or are these, would you recommend any of them? Like, recommend one over the other or anything like that?
I really like any of the concepts that you don't have to move the poles for. And the reason I say that is because if you design something that you are forced to move the south poles for, it can take a long, long time to get that all squared away. And so, by, I mean, the first eight designs or something like that assume that you could leave the poles there. And that's the safest, simply because of how much it costs to do the poles and how long it takes to do the poles. And you can still take down the poles with that option and then you have this nice open area. And so, that would be my recommendation.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Shawna.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I need the water reefer, I'm gonna have to.
Okay, so the next step is fair and council discussion. We have RV parking. I think they didn't expect that one.
So, we discussed this before and council went over, thinking about it again and maybe get a consensus to have. Tyler did it, write up a proposal. And what it is, again, it's just seventy-two hour parking your yard three times a year during the operating season, which is made through September, through the first of September. So, if everybody could do that, it would help on a sure days or hometown days, especially with parking on the side streets. People can park in the yard, then you have two lane traffic. And there's no place for people to camp, no place for people to get a hotel. We house up to forty people sometimes.
Forty?
Yeah.
I'm coming to your house.
It's pretty fun.
No, that's not forty units in the backyard. We house forty. So, I just, I think it'd be a great thing. I'm just asking for three seventy-two hour permits a year. There's places around town that people are living illegally in their RVs. Yeah, lots of them. If you wanna go for a walk, I could take you. It'd take you about five minutes, you're about eight. So, I'm just, I'm asking to make this legal.
Okay.
For a three day period with a permit?
Yep, with a permit. The permit would be posted on the house. However many people you think you can fit in your yard, I think that's fine.
So, what three times a year? I know Sheridan days, but?
May, any time. Between the days.
Graduation weddings.
Oh, I see.
Not set days, it's just three times a year you can do.
Like Christmas would be a little bit different.
So, it'd be in your yard? May, June, July, August and September, but you could get up to three per year.
Unless it's really rainy and then you can't get one.
Yeah, there's your yard.
Yeah, right up your yard.
No.
That's the permitting process, right?
Yes. Okay, Kayla?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I'm just, the only thing I'm worried about is if we issue a permit and you let them stay there and then they'll leave. That's the only thing I'm worried about because from what I understand, it's hard to remove RVs.
Pardon me?
No.
This is three day parking. I guess in the code enforcement office, if you come and start ticketing the land or the landowner or the renter of the house, I don't see a real issue there if we enforce our codes. We need to enforce our codes.
I know another thing was they have that permit, you know, it requires that that permit is posted where it can be easily seen by code enforcement. They should be able to drive by your house, say, oh yeah, those are the people that have that three day permit. And so, that, you know, that would be helpful and they wouldn't say, what in the world, you know, why are these, you know, I think that would be pretty easy to see. Roxy?
Um, can, can code enforcement enforce that and get the private talk for you?
Yes.
Because of the permits, right?
Right.
Well, because they already disallow parking on, no, I can't think of the ones.
Yeah, what's the one?
It has to be on a concrete pad or gravel.
It'd be gravel, better be asphalt, concrete, papers.
Or gravel.
No, I don't like gravel.
It's gravel. I was already attacked.
We have effort gravel.
Awesome. That's probably a good problem.
Yes, it has to be packed, packed in.
I believe so, yes.
Did you have something else?
I did. So, the people that are gonna put a vehicle in your yard, they're gonna do it without a permit. They're not gonna pay attention, just like they do now. So, I don't think that's an issue. I think somebody goes to the time to get the permit, allows some people seventy-two hours of parking in their yard with no utilities, you know, maybe electricity, but no water or sewer. I don't see it's a problem. I'm gonna say this, but I shouldn't, but we did it for years. We never had a problem, till last year.
Oh, your microphone's off, Kevin.
Am I good? I missed this, but who and how do you determine? So, you said if it's muddy, then it's a no-go. Can we maybe have like an open of the season?
I guess we could.
Official, okay. And then the council can like declare that.
I would, I would.
So that it's not, well, no, I think, like, I think, no, earlier than May first unless the council says it's still too muddy for them.
Oh, okay.
And then, there's like an official opening of the season that's done.
Okay.
And it would be better if it's less than one, not, okay, whoa. It'd be better if it was a council decision so that it is not me determining mud, please.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, would that be determined every year?
Yes, I think it should be.
We're, we're, we're.
It's like an announcement, maybe it's fun. It's like, it's the already season's on.
Already season's open.
And then, maybe it's like the end. It is now closed. So, maybe it's like, could be between, no, earlier than May first, no later than whatever date you said, but that the council reserves the right in case something happens, of stormy weather. I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. Because I don't want people going in my yard, tearing it all up, drinking mud out across the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't wanna be the sole person that determines when it's muddy.
Sometimes that yard is just as hard as concrete, but yeah, when it's muddy, it's rude.
So, I can, I understand that it would be at the owner's discretion to go get the permit from the city. What if someone's running a place? What, how does that play into it?
Same way.
The owner has to be the runner?
No, the renter.
The occupant.
The occupant of the house.
I think with the chicken permits, the owner has to sign off.
Yeah, I always.
Because that could be in violation of their rental agreement. That's a good question.
That's, that is a good question, yeah.
They might not wanna.
Should we make some notes now?
My question is, why does the council care if somebody's gonna wreck their yard?
Yeah.
That's true.
Ecological.
We do care.
Okay.
We do care to wreck them.
Yeah, that's a violation.
That's, that causes.
So, it's not gonna be subject to being on a gravel pad? Is that what I heard you get kind of excited about?
No.
What did you say? Well, that's even better.
No, that's better for me. I don't have to pour concrete at the end of my driveway. I can put some gravel, compacted gravel.
So, then you could just simply put, like they do in real estate, subject to a contingent upon, the weather, as if it's kind of a weird thing. And also, you don't want somebody just parallel parking in front of the sidewalk to go into the house. They would have to probably uniformly park those, you know what I mean? There should be some.
Setbacks?
Well, or you just, you know, you don't, you know, I'm just pulling in front of your, you know, your driveway, your sidewalk going into your house, I can just get out of my rig and walk, right? And, I mean, but you'd want it to be, you know, not any, just a uniformity of some such. Like, like, like parallel with the house or, you know what I'm saying, something like that, so they can't just be.
So that they're not all hot.
You know, I go in the driveway and I park this way in front of his house and I just jump out and say, hey, how you doing? This is really easy for me to get, not saying that you do that, but trust me, where if you don't have little set, you know, little rules, then somebody might think about doing it on the street and it might look a little bit horny or not good.
Sometimes it's the way of the land, too.
Well, yeah, yeah, some people don't have as much land as you do, so they would have to kind of park it, you know, instead of sideways. Have to park it certain, more Sarbini-ish.
Okay. Did you make any reference to what would happen if there was noise complaints? Like, how many noise complaints in your guy?
Don't we have a noise?
Well, we do, but it takes a whole time before, because you go to court. And that's one of the most, very most difficult things to regulate is sound. So, I talked to my family about this and including my children, the six-year-old. And he was very concerned that he, it might be loud and he wouldn't be able to sleep. And so, if there is noise like that or, and the cops get called out, does the council care?
We've been doing this for how many years? About fifteen, sixteen years?
I'm not talking about your family.
But yeah, no worries. We have a lot of musicians and guitar playing out and I think they never complain about it. But we have trees and stuff, so maybe that won't be the noise.
We, I know that there will be somebody who will complain about noise.
Yeah.
I know that. I know that not everybody's gonna be happy with this. And I know that not very, not everybody in the world is respectful or cares about what their neighbors say to them.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I think you need to think about some of the hook here, right? Because the problem is, is that even if I was to cite them into court, that is a month later. And people may want immediate answers. So, I am, I'm just trying, I'm always the person that's trying to, you know, provide questions for you.
So, the owner would have to go to court. The owners should be on the owner to let their guests know what the protocol is and the owner would have to come in, I would think.
I think if they get in trouble.
And Kayla?
I was just gonna ask if Tyler wants to research and see if this has already been done somewhere that they already have an answer for the noise.
And Jim?
I wanna understand what you just said. Because, you know, we have so many wild parties at my house. And I'm having a really great time, loud party, and the cop shows up, hey, we gotta shut this down. We're getting complaints. I said, give me a ticket, I'll see you in a month. No, there should be an immediate cessation of noise. It should be a one-time stop by the police and if not, they should go home, somebody wait.
So, that can happen at some parties, but then the next day, they can get another noise complaint and then the next day. And so, this is a recreation thing. This isn't a living thing. Does that make sense? So, this is, okay, this is a recreation thing. The council is giving a recreation, okay? So, this is like a leisure activity. This is like an extra thing. So, I propose that if they get in trouble, if we get notified by the neighbors, then they lose the ability to have the permits for one year.
Oh, that's a privilege.
Not always, but probably.
Not just based on a complaint, because?
Yeah, like if the cops show up and the cops have a recommendation or what? I don't know what that looks like.
Like if you do the citation or?
If the citation is issued.
Well, you know, kinda like a K O A camp, having gone camping, but you usually sign a little document saying that you're not gonna get totally out of hand and this and that. So, if they come to get the permit, it'll just say on the permit, a little left way. I've got good neighbors like me, I'm not gonna say anything, but if you got a really bad neighbor that complains about chickens and they're not doing anything and you got a permit, then you got those people too.
Yvonne, did you have something?
Yeah, on our park use thing, we have noise ordinances when you use the park. Like, you could use it, but if we get complaints, then they will be addressed and you'll have to space whatever. I mean, so we could probably address it along the same pipes. But I had one other thing, though. I was thinking when it came to the muddy yards, I just wanna be the devil's advocate here. If I'm a mom planning my daughter's wedding and I decide I wanna do it on May fifteenth because it's a significant day to me, and I'm thinking city, May first, I'm thinking for planning purposes, if most of this is for graduations and festivities, that it may be helpful to have an opening date and then let it be on then. Like, if my yard gets torn up, I'm probably gonna cancel. I, I'm just thinking like.
Back to Tyler's question, why does the city care?
Yeah, exactly.
Which would have been my recommendation regardless.
I don't wanna determine muddy, so. So, what do you need for this one?
How much money?
What do you need with a general, sensible people?
Nobody's punching us in the face to not move forward with it.
All right, good job, council. Don't punch anyone in the face. All right, so this means that Tyler can take it and work it and bring it back to you for a vote?
Yeah, so I propose that we bring it for this party discussion on December six, December sixth.
The December work session.
December work session.
I heard about it.
So, that's a party discussion, but not necessarily a voting session?
Yes, but it also could, if you.
Oh, that's up to the mayor.
There's like possible vote here, okay. Okay, great. And anyone else?
Margaret?
Yes, go ahead, David.
I wanna move on to another subject, but you have something on this?
Well, no, I got this, so.
Yes.
But nobody's verified this, so does somebody wanna do that for me?
Yes, I'm taking the RSVPs for that, so will you be attending?
Yes, I will. I'll have a plus one, please.
Okay, so two. And I, I just have a question left, um, left about.
And Kayla?
I need to, I can get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, just these people for noon. I just have to have it turned in by noon. And then, Roxy?
I will also let you know before noon.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
I'm gonna get my phone.
So, Kate Buck was quite then about the crosswalk situation. I just wanna say, coming off of Highway eighteen, down Bridge Street towards the bridge, first four crosswalks have the gray, big signs showing that it's a crosswalk. And it stops, stops at Brinrow. There's no sign at that one. And on down cleared the bridge to IGA. No signs. You don't. And I've realized as people have gone around me, the last time I thought, what in the, are they doing? Well, like Kayla said, you can't see anybody, but you also think when you're stopped there by the IGA, that you might be turning down the street there or you might be turning into the IGA. So, they don't even, because if it's any kind of overcast and if it's any kind of damp, you don't see that crosswalk. You do not see it. And I drive over it every day, two, three times a day. The next ones, they're still not marked by the bank, by both banks. There's no sign. So, whatever we come up with, I think we need to come up with as soon as possible, as it's getting darker, as it's getting harder to see. And this has been going on. We've talked about this for several months now. Go ahead.
I remember when the ODOT woman was here, she suggested like those cross paintings to really illuminate it so you could see it. Why don't we do that? How do we do that? I mean.
So, the person that does this stuff has been on paternity leave and so, he's returning in a couple of weeks.
Oh, really?
So, are we on the top of this list? Well, he sent me a text and said he needs to call me and talk to me.
Oh, good. Are those the red and white ones? The red and white bag, no stripes?
I imagine he'll have a proposal.
I thought we were talking about yellow, yes.
Yeah, I thought. I heard it's called red and white. It really is, but it wasn't on the streets. It was just on the actual, in the middle of the street, not on the sidewalks.
So, and Jim?
I have a totally different subject if we're reading.
Okay, well, maybe update Heidi's?
Okay, you need to remember, though, that if you, and I know that the crosswalk, I know this stuff is important. I'm not trying to say it's not, that you only have a finite amount of money, okay? So, especially in your street fund, there is not very much money. So, when you start thinking Sheridan Road, you start thinking crosswalks, even signs, you need to remember. So when you start thinking Sheridan Road, you start thinking crosswalks, even signs, you need to remember that all of this costs money.
Okay, then let's go to Kayla.
Um, I, uh, I think I mentioned, um, I, um, oh, um, in that report in State Ruses Schools, that there, it was like the twenty feet or something from a crosswalk, and it'd be painted yellow on the curb, is that accurate?
I.
I, I was just wondering if this.
Remember how we are also, the engineer said that we're updating our standards?
Okay.
We've been using the city of Salem standards, which are kind of an overkill in a lot of ways for Sheridan, and so we've been working on that as well. So that kind of stuff gets flushed out in there, but if that's what the State Ruses Schools, um, recommendation is, then that's, it's likely, it should have been adopted.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I mean, I know we talked about having compact parking there, that first parking spot with the country bargains, but, I mean, I.
Yeah, that's right.
I, when I went to cross the street, I got it, there was a car parked right there, so I had to walk past the car to, you know, look, um, and then even, I don't know if we can have a bulb out there, too, but I know there's one on Main Street, I don't know if that would, that would help, um.
Great, could you sponsor that, Kayla?
Yes, that's one of the ideas, but once again, this all costs money.
Well, I, I was gonna say, though, I thought when, um, the person from ODOT was here, that, um, she said that there are grants, and that she's looking for, you know, stuff like, to do stuff like that, in, instead of stuff on I five or something like that, I thought that's what she said.
Okay, and Roxie?
Can we paint a yellow curb wherever we want? On Bridge Street?
Perhaps.
Okay. And then Danny, did you still have something?
Why can't we try that? Paint is pretty darn cheap.
Yes, where do you wanna paint? Just the one spot in front?
You want me to go out and market?
That is always helpful, because you also have to remember that we get people who say that there's not enough parking, and then you've got all the businesses that, say, you're taking.
There's also, there's also fire hydrants that get parked too close to you, because they are required ten feet, and there is no yellow mark, and people park there. So, if we can get some yellow paint, let's try that, start small, see if we can get some sort of a consensus, see if it helps, before we spend money.
Roxie, could you make that a motion, instead of just?
I would like to make a motion that the city council, um, direct Public Works, or City Idiots, City Manager, to arrange to have, um, yellow paint on the curbs on Bridge Street in front of, to be determined in some future marked places, I could, I can't put that in exactly where it's gonna be, on Bridge Street.
The spot adjacent to the crosswalk?
Um, crosswalks and.
Are you saying crosswalks, plural?
Yes.
Okay, we should fine tune that a little bit, so that's what we should do.
I mean, I shouldn't say make both ends of the same way.
Both sides.
Both sides of the same crosswalk.
We can start with that. We'll start small, and this is the IGA one.
Correct.
Okay, so I know, Danny, you've tried as well.
And the fire hydrant.
I just, I, I wanna say, I do know this costs money, but I'm gonna be sick if somebody gets killed there. I'm gonna be totally sick, because we've talked about it, and talked about it, and I know money is money, this was money, uh, this is money. So we, you know, I know this money doesn't come from that money, but.
Yes.
It's just, hopefully, there's some ODOT grant money out there or something, but, again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be devastated if somebody gets hurt or killed in that crosswalk.
And Lucy?
So what do you guys think about the, instead of yellow, I mean, whether or the yellow is, in the middle of the street, red and white diagonals? And see if that works, because that way it would still leave parking, but anybody who's driving down the road would see the bright red and white slanted lines, I see, I've seen that in some town, and it just made me almost stop, like it was like a stop sign, because it was red and white. It just, my mind, talking about this guy tonight on Sheridan Road, it just gave the illusion that I was supposed to stop, because it was red and white, and that way, you know, the compact car thing, without the yellow, because I do know it does take parking, and maybe see, because I'm not into putting signs up, I'm not into spending that kind of money, but I am into making bold, red and white at a slant, just to see if that works to making people stop. And then you can blot out Roxanne parking spots, but that should stop somebody if they're driving down South Bridge Street.
Okay, and Jim?
I wanted to address the, the money, because we've had this discussion, while Ty was here, I said, black and whites, too expensive, sign, kind of expensive. Paint, cheapest way to go. Let's get some paint out there, and I thought we'd agree to that, and I'm surprised that we're still talking about it.
I wonder if there's some kind of stencil that they lay out.
I have no idea.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Okay, so this, we, yes, there's a stencil, we are not the stencil company, okay? This is all done through spaniel, spaniel, spaniel striping here, and so I will tell you, it would probably be about four thousand dollars, because it is the type of paint that is, if you have to have thermo reflective type paint, otherwise during these rainy times, it won't be as effective. So you do have to do this the right way, and yes, we can do it, yes, we can do it, I have not had specific direction about this, we've kind of wavered and talked about different ways to handle it, but at this point, what I have is I have a first and a second to put some yellow paint on both sides. That can be done, but the red and white, anything in the street, that's gonna require more, okay? I do wanna say that ODOT, yes, does have some funds that she has, but those are for the entire region, which is Yamhill, I think Marion, and Polk County and Lynn County. And that's her little pot of money that she has, which is like a million dollars, so that's a lot of projects that can come out of that. So we need a plan, okay, of what you wanna ask for, and it needs to be serious, and so, that's something I can kind of put together, but I am not an engineer. And that, nobody on your public works staff is an engineer either, so we do have to be very, um, put together when you ask for those. You can't just say, hey, we want some money for some red and white paint, right? So we gotta be sure that we, we are moving collaboratively and as a consensus to ask her for money. She, Jenna with ODOT that was here, she explained to us a wonderful project that is hap- well, it's sad why it's happening, but it's happening, and, um, there will be crosswalks with curb and ramp eighty-eight, all the way from, what's the one from Richard, or, I think it's Richard Street, all the way down Main Street, going out of town. All of those are gonna be updated on both sides of the street, that is gonna be so wonderful to see that, and that will start happening, I think it was twenty twenty-five, the summer of twenty twenty-five, which feels like a long time away, but that's how we're gonna, that's kind of what happens there. The same project at the same time will be happening in Little Minut, by the way, so that's really, I think that's really positive for the streets.
And Jenny?
So, I think what Roxie's trying to get out of here is, we, we gotta get cars further away from that crosswalk, because you can't see the people coming out of the street by the cars, they're, they're rocked by the cars, so it's really easy, especially for a little guy, to step out in front of somebody, they didn't see him. So I, I think Roxie's idea is a good start, I think we need to paint the crosswalks, uh, but at least we could do that yellow paint, and make those compact car parking, maybe on each side, too, and shorten them up with yellow paint.
Okay, Heidi?
As an outsider, like I go here, my, by the way, I had my two years on. Remember first? Yes. So as an outsider, as an outsider coming in, I mean, I've grown up in Yamhill County, yes, of course, been in Sheridan lots, but when I first came in here, one of the things, and I don't, this is not nice, business friendly to say, but one of the things that really throws me about that, and maybe you guys have all kind of grown to understand, is that IGA mouth, right there, the in and out, that is really close to the bridge, that intersection, when I see that and come over the bridge, I am usually focused on that, because I feel like it's a grocery store, and there's a lot going on, and a lot of traffic, and so then I lose probably what I should be dedicating my driver vision to, which is a crosswalk. But I'm so concentrated on the traffic potential coming flooding there, so that's just something that I've observed about myself. I don't know if I'm a lone wolf.
No, I, I watch that.
Okay, go ahead, Roxie.
I, I don't wanna change the topic, but could we request that one driveway be one way, and the other be the other way?
I've always wished it.
It might help change that traffic pattern, and if people were just going in or out closer to the bridge, and coming out closer to the side, I mean, it would need to be maybe kind of thought out. That might make a huge difference, just making it a specific one way.
Okay, and Liz?
Cause they got two.
I was agreeing with Heidi, because I, I tend to watch, especially people on bikes, come shooting out in front of the grocery store, so I, rather than watching the crosswalk, but I like the idea of just getting across, right, just whatever they're calling, and I think, um, Jenna brought, didn't she show us different pictures of different scenarios, like, like at a corner and stuff that we could look at? Maybe if you could ask her to send those again, and give us a better idea.
Okay, yes, I can do that. One of the things that I don't quite understand how I work with this council, is that sometimes I feel like you guys want me to do things, and then sometimes I feel like I do too much for you, and then I don't really know how to please you always. I don't wanna do something, and then you're like, hey, you didn't tell us, and I'm like, I just would just go do it, so maybe you're happy.
We're gonna work on that, we understand that.
So, right now, thank you, thank you very much, uh, right now, one of the things for me is just to paint the curb yellow, right?
Yeah, let's take a step.
Okay, let's just do that, okay.
So Roxie had a motion, you seconded it.
I will.
Kayla had?
Kayla.
And, uh, let's see, any more discussion?
All in favor? You did it.
Oh, Lucy, you did it.
She did. It was just lackluster, it was like five minutes.
Okay, Jim?
Eleven thirty.
There's a process, and I don't understand it, and I'm gonna ask you to explain it for us. A lot of people I talk to on this survey, I went around talking to people, what, what's with all the cars? What cars? The ones that are parked on the street, they've been there six months, there's grass growing, I mean, this guy's got the truck, okay, and then they say, you guys said you had a code enforcement officer, what's going on? There's a process, and I'd like you to explain to us, and anybody that's listening, that the city isn't ignoring it, from what I'm saying, it's a process, but we're not having good luck with it, is that correct?
Uh, well, we could have better luck, but we don't have a code, I think there's a misconception in the town, that the code enforcement only does code enforcement, like forty hours of it, that is not how that works.
Oh, there's emergency management?
There's emergency management, there's safety, there's helping at the front desk, which actually takes quite a bit of time, so there's a lot of other things that come with that, but we're not like, have a patrol hat on and like driving up and down streets, that is not what's happening.
Well, I was told that some people said, I reported that car eight, nine times, I don't know if they did or not, I'll take their word for it, but nothing happens, according to them. And what I heard was, you know, the orange tag doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna go, could you please explain that?
Yes, so it is through the police, and as Marion, Mayor actually witnessed today, which was, I handed them another one that I had reported for them to tag, and so this is a constant thing of the traffic stuff, and so it is best if they make a report, and yes, it may take multiple times, I don't think it should, but I would be very interested to see the last time that they have made that report. If they have made it within the last four months, then that would be more concerning for me.
That was what was implied to me.
Was it less than four months?
Yeah, within the last four months.
Which car, where is it?
Uh, several, I, I mean, I can't.
Is it just over where you live?
I know, I know, uh, one complaint specifically is the, uh, Madison and Bridge on the corner there, they have a car on blocks, in the yard.
Oh, this is in yards?
Well, no, that's, you know, they're both, but they're our vehicles.
Are we talking, yes, so they, it's a big difference, if it's in a yard versus on the street.
Okay, but on the street as well, they got, they're saying, that car hasn't moved for four months, or six months, and, you know, I don't know which car it's talking about, cause I, I'm not gonna go orange tag it.
We don't have, well, uh, what do you call it, like the paint for the tires?
Right.
That, like a parking meter made, so.
And actually throw up the tires anymore.
Yeah. Well, no shock even, right?
It is a fourth amendment violation.
But regardless, if, if they put a complaint in and say, I want to hear back, they're gonna hear back, right? Even if she, even if she says, sorry, we can't because of blah, 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 I feel, I think people would understand better than if they reported and hear nothing, even though they put their email address in there.
Yep, it should go right into the, the system, so we are making some big changes for code enforcement, and I'll be prepared to talk about those at the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, and Danny?
Can we move on to another subject?
Sure.
That's good.
It's a journey.
So, we, uh, I came to court on Thursday, I'm gonna start coming to court whenever I can, and so we did get three cases this Thursday, court, and they were, uh, traffic violations. Uh, speeding, going around with license, insurance, blah, 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 all three of them were about the same. There was not one code enforcement, and there's been citations issued, several, and I have not seen a code enforcement in the last two times I've been to the court. So, I don't know, or they lost that?
They don't show up.
They don't show up?
Okay.
You don't play on the document if they don't show up.
Those are handled after court with the judge, and then they don't show up, and so they are issued a citation, but they don't pay. So, or.
What's the option?
Well, the option is you can hire somebody, no, it's not criminal, so you can hire somebody to go do it, and then put it as a lien on the property, which is the abatement thing.
Okay, go ahead.
So there's several code violations going on, that the renter is causing them, the landlord is not, has the landlord been contacted and?
And lots of them, we have actually, I don't know how people feel about this, but especially over in Viola, people have been evicted. And on several of our side streets, people have lost their homes through this process. So that's a plus and a minus, but we have had success getting several of the worst homes over in the Viola area to get cleaned up.
Okay, and Roxie?
The Viola property, the new, the new people?
Yes.
Have moved in a motorhome? New ones, I'm not sure are gonna be any better, but.
No, and that motorhome came from another property that was evicted, so there are.
I recognized it, but I didn't.
So it's essentially two people now that have doubled up that have that.
Okay, Danny?
So, and still there's been no, uh, speed trailer put out on West Main?
I did ask about that, too.
Oh, did you? Okay, uh, and then we're talking about putting a speed trailer on Sheridan Road.
The deputy did say he's been out there watching that area.
That's good.
That West Main?
Pardon me?
The West Main one with the.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, Jim?
Is a traffic ticket, assuming they pay the money?
They do those.
Okay, does that go into the general fund?
Yes.
I wish somebody went into the street fund, because there is a pain, okay?
Well, you could do that. Money on any of the other.
But then, that also goes to support all the other stuff, parks and.
Take, take your pick, every form ticket, uh, goes to the same fund.
Dip it up.
Well, we can put a little line in the, in the line for you to do minutes, but yes, it's getting, we can handle that, if you would like to see that, there's gonna be a new line in the budget.
Okay.
Jim was just speaking to Joe, you don't need to change the budget.
I don't know about changing.
We're not gonna choke down this year.
I don't wanna change the budget, just, you know, I, I appreciate, we have limited funds, obviously, and paint is expensive, I get that. If there's money coming in from people driving down the street, let's put that money back where they can help pay for crosswalks and signs and whatever else. But not tomorrow.
Let's just.
Okay, any other concerns or, we will move on to city manager project updates.
I don't know at this point, we do need to pick a different date, because this time change is really affecting me. We need to pick a different date, um, according to Representative Lu Seta at Elmer's office. So they cannot come on the fourteenth. And, um, John LaGuerza wants to hold a, um, town hall with the task force members on homelessness. So I was kind of thinking, since you all have the fourteenth, not a booked free, why don't we just use the December fourteenth for the task force to do their homeless town hall?
That works.
Okay, and then.
December fourteenth, oh, I'm just saying.
At six PM to like eight PM? We'll give it set time if that's okay.
So is it the same time, just a different speaker or just a different city?
Just a difference.
That's all I need to know.
Different as that, same time.
And the, the high school is so reserved, so I told Kayla, it's like, oh, maybe I'll just swap these. So when do we want Lu Seta to come? Next year?
Well.
Yeah, we're sure.
I have a question real quick. I mean, she's a busy woman. We get it. She goes lots of places. Then she scheduled the first time, did she say, hey, I can, I'm coming to Sheridan Box after December fourteenth, can you fit me in?
No.
We told her?
The other way around.
Okay, I have no clue then.
Yeah.
So are we calling the meeting for John LaGuerza's town hall?
Yes, it's homeless, he'll come up with a name, I'm sure.
Are you just putting task force on the?
Yeah. Town hall is the key. Yes, town hall, six to eight PM, topic homeless facilitator, John.
Okay. And on the set of, do we just want to look to see what would be good sometime, you know, mid to late January?
January, okay, I'll ask for mid to late January to get the updates from her office.
Thank you.
But not for second.
No, not to mid to late January, yeah. Okay, I don't, I don't think I have anything else to report.
The engineer said it already.
There's a lot of work happening, lots of wheels are in motion, things are moving forward. Tyler, I continue, we deal with the whole host of HR things, which take up quite a bit of time.
I love it.
And we are gonna come at you with, um, there's some discussions about things that need to change with the union amendment and so I need to figure out the next steps to handle that.
Is next year a union year?
But these need to happen sooner than now. And we do have some employees asking for some of them, and one of them is a biggie for the city council to consider. Do you want me to just, I don't know, drive in? Nope?
Let's wait, yeah, let's wait, let's hope so.
I know you're tired, but any update on Stella Jones? Have they tested their water lately or?
Yes, they have tested their water and I, um, the water results are fine in the river and the lagoons are fine.
Okay, good.
They have resumed operation?
They have resumed their operations, yes. They are, um, they are, uh, putting their stormwater through the stormwater treatment process on their plant, and then their outfall is on the Yampel River. And they will continue to be under regulation with the DEQ to monitor the outfall at two specific locations, one is upriver and one is midriver, um, between their outfall and our river, our, our water entry take, our drinking water intake. And those are being monitored, especially during seasonal changes right now. So there's a lot more water coming in, and so we are curious about that. Um, Tyler, do you want to say anything else or? You like that?
I don't know of any more, but I know less than you.
Okay, I've also been meeting, um, and trying to gather more information about the kind of whole DCOI. And I've been meeting with some, um, just, um, math people and science people.
How's that adding up?
Has there been any changes in, uh, testing for Stella Jones or dumping into the river without more regulations or more stipulations?
So their regulation right now is they're in the, there's like three phases, right? There's the triage phase, oh my gosh, this happened, then there's the metal phase, and then there's the cleanup phase. And they are still in the cleanup phase. And that is where these other, these tests are coming from. These tests are not required. These ones that they're doing quarterly and weekly, those are not required.
But the city's required whenever we?
Oh, yeah, we're required. We're required to, I think weekly, yeah, with, um, lagoons. And lagoons just have things that are naturally found in the rest of them, so, yeah.
Will that ever change?
Oh, the way that cities are regulated for wastewater?
Not the cities, still.
Um, that's.
Companies like Stella Jones.
That's one of the things that the city council will need to decide at some point, is what our requests are for the final cleanup routine. Okay, with the regulation intervals and what kind of tests. And or, and or, they could help with other projects.
Is there a hand?
Any other questions for me?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'm sucking it. We all sucking it.
I'll have any discussion about that. We're all in favor. Thank you very much.
Boy, you guys are troopers.
Thank you for those that hung in there.
Shortest pocket of the year so far. Longest.
Is it okay I show it?
It's not.
Well, it's okay, so, oh, sorry, I thought you didn't.
So just in case if anyone didn't see, this is what went around the room.
Oh, I think you just.
I'm here to let you guys see it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's cool.
Yeah, I think it's right.
Yeah, is that, is that a new shirt or?